Approximately ten after six and we're reconvening our meeting or starting our council meeting, July the twentieth. We're here in the city hall chambers and we're ready to start. First thing is the pledge allegiance. Mickey, would you please lead us in the pledge? Thank you and welcome everybody. Our first order of business is presentations and interviews. We have a couple items here tonight. The first item on there is a presentation for an Eagle Scout Darren Brambleton.
Mayor, we should have a roll call first.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just want to get going here.
Councilmember Brown.
I'm sorry.
Mayor Hoag.
Here.
Councilmember Kellum.
Here.
Councilmember Morrison.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond.
Always got a good man down there to remind me. Thank you.
We have here for this young gentleman, he has a, the Eagle Scout Award, which is very, very hard to get because I tried one. This young, young man Darren Brambleton and rape recognition stops and other clerks, the city of Canaveral. Find a three hundred native seal at each crossover Madison and Roman Jackson avenues. And this young gentleman donated over eleven hundred dollars in funds that he raised personally to the Greenham instructor, the products. I thought it meant for just doing the seals and then a lot of what he gives away just my daddy could have.
Thank you, everyone. That's a little close. Yeah, it was a hard process, but it was fun doing it. The only problems I had going throughout planting was getting the actual sea oats. I think you said sea oats when you said that. I, I ended up actually planting beach elders, three hundred of them. My plan was to plant three thousand sea oats, but since the government bought the sea oats for the Great Barrier Reef, I couldn't end up buying them, so I went with a different option. And I had so much money left over from trying to get the original budget that I set for, decided to donate to the city. Because I feel like you guys could have used it a lot better than I could have. So, and Zach's already got it planned out and he's already got a new project set away, so I'm really happy you guys used my money well. Thank you so much.
Next, next month we'll have one for the share talks.
Be much shorter. Good, how are you?
Okay, this is a rather lengthy thing, but it's all true. The Cape Canaveral Volunteer Fire Department, AKA, AKA, you know what that means. Cape Canaveral Fire Rescue was the first entity to sign a memorandum of agreement with the Florida Department of Health in Brevard County. In conjunction with Brevard County Emergency Management, CFR, which is Cape Canaveral Fire Rescue, successfully met all the DOH requirements and was on standby status, ready to activate the point of distribution, POD. That's the, gotcha, I assume for the public health department. To facilitate vaccine distribution operations in order to better serve Brevard County residents. And once we're, once we're, as, once the POD was activated, CFR successfully administered over five hundred vaccinations to Florida residents, including Brevard County, neighboring counties totaling over one thousand shots from March twenty-third to twenty twenty-one to May twenty-sixth, twenty-one. This involved both on and off duty personnel picking up vaccine doses daily from the DOH, proper storage, delivering vaccines to the POD, extensive paperwork and returning the equipment, unused vaccines, and required reports in a timely fashion to DOH. And CFR successively coordinated and conducted touchless drive-through vaccine POD at Station fifty-two, eighty-nine seventy Columbia Road, Cape Canaveral, Florida. In doing so, they streamlined the vaccination process with passengers remaining in their vehicles resulting in limited contact. Even though the vaccine effort was open to Florida residents as a team, they wanted to ensure the city residents had excessively, if they wished to be vaccinated, CFR also went above and beyond by providing assistance to Canaveral residents without transportation. And at that time, the POD had been deactivated. CFR is standing ready to activate the POD again if COVID nineteen cases rise. In addition, they are currently supporting the vaccine effort and as seen in the medical assistance, they are providing to Port Canaveral's twenty-three cruise ship vessels and the administration of approximately ten thousand doses to cruise ship staff. Therefore, I Robert Hoag, Mayor of Cape Canaveral, do hereby proclaim and invite the citizens of Cape Canaveral to honor Cape Canaveral Fire Rescue for service provided during the COVID nineteen pandemic vaccination distribution to the community. Thank you, guys. You all did a great job.
So, just so everybody knows, I'd like to, especially for the council and everybody that's here, like to definitely give a big shout out to the city manager Todd and his team, Melinda, Zach, Amy. These guys helped out so much with paperwork, picking up distribution shots, everything. Couldn't have done without them, so thank you.
No, just echo what Chris said. This, this was a group effort. It wasn't just us. It was everybody on staff that was actually here from the city participated because it was tremendous effort to keep everybody on time coming for shots and moving them in and out. And as soon as Amy's tired of this place, she's coming to work for me.
No, she's not. Okay, Chief. Ethan, Assistant Chief, I just want to thank you personally because I know everybody in the city of Cape Canaveral that wanted to get a vaccine, got one. And I know the personal effort that Assistant Chief Flynn went through just in our community alone to make sure our residents were vaccinated. So I just want to thank you for everything you all have done and the hard work that you put in this endeavor. Thank you.
Thank you.
We got a good fire service. We all really realize we're great. They do great. Thank you, guys. Okay, next item is the consent agenda. Or, I'm sorry, we got to do public participation. I have a card. I have two cards. And they're both on the agenda. Would you like to speak now under participation, Mr. Mulberry? Are you here? Okay. On the consent agenda. On the items, number three is review the agreement, City Cape Canaveral Property Registration for, that's item three. On the consent agenda, come on up.
Well, I just wanted to be able to answer questions about the contract, the services that we provide. And we're excited to work with you guys in regulating short-term rentals. We've been doing this across the country. We've got, we're in fifteen different states, about three hundred different communities work with us. We work with them to regulate rental properties, properties that are at risk of being abandoned, vacant and in foreclosure. So, we already work with you guys on the foreclosure ordinance. We're looking forward to working with you on short-term rental. If you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them.
Anybody goes, this is a, yeah, go ahead. This is our people that are gonna do the.
We have, we have what we call registration agents and we, we gather data from all over the place, mostly Airbnb and DRVO. We'll get data from their sites and then we'll look at that as evidentiary proof that the property is being rented. And then we'll look at the bookings to see if they're booking it under seven days, which is one of your requirements. So, we have about fifty different agents and they'll be allocated to Cape Canaveral to look at that.
Mr. Mulberry, thank you for being here. We are about to talk about the consent agenda. This is an item on the consent agenda, so I would ask that before we get too much further into it, let's just see if it even gets pulled off the consent agenda. If you would just hang out for a few minutes, please. Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Sure, I'll hang here.
If it gets pulled off, we'll be here. All right, we have another card, but that's on the agenda. Presentation interviews are with consent agenda. We have seven items, I believe it is, seven items on the consent agenda. Does anybody care to remove any items?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I move that we remove items number two, three and four.
Two, three and four.
Please, thank you.
Anybody else? There is nothing. I'll ask for a motion on one, five, six and seven to approve.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve items one, five, six and seven on the consent agenda.
There we have a motion in a second to approve items one, five, six and seven on the consent agenda. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Brown.
Four.
Mayor Hoag.
Four.
Councilmember Kellum.
Four.
Councilmember Morrison.
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond.
Mr. Morrison.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first item wanted to pull was the resolution number twenty twenty-one, adopting a tentative proposed millage rate for the levy of ad valorem taxes for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two on all taxable property located within the city of Cape Canaveral, providing for an effective date. I, property values, just going back to the budget book, went up substantially. And I know the rollback rate was set based on, you know, receiving the same or similar revenue from last year. But, you know, coming out, we, we were concerned about revenue due to COVID. We found out that we're gonna have, I think, enough in the budget. I'm not talking about the four million American, but I think that the budget stands on its own. And I'd like to see a decrease in this, this rate because when I'm doing the math, to me, the millage rate as of right now is it's at rollback rate. So, last year we were able to go below rollback rate, but a millage rate of three point two five mills. When you look at the history of Cape Canaveral, we've continued to, I don't look at the increase in the millage rate as a, or a decrease in the millage rate as something that's, I mean, we all know that's not necessarily lowering taxes, but coming off a very hard year, the city's gonna fare okay, but there are residents, property owners, businesses that are still struggling. And many of them work from home. And for us to not go out of our way and figure out a way to lower the millage rate below rollback rate, I think is, is a missed opportunity. And so, for many years, we worked hard to do that. I had a lot of respect for this council, the mayor and council member Mayor Randalls, who always worked hard to go below the rollback rate. That's something that I thought was a step in the right direction. And back in seventeen or sixteen, there was a twenty percent increase. And then every year since then, they've tried to whittle it down, but to me, I think we're still above. Yes, we're the fourth lowest or third or fourth lowest in the, in the county. But when you look at what West Melbourne has done, the millage rate that they've got this year is lower than according to the budget book from last year. And I think that we need to follow a similar path. I think it's a big differentiator from us. And a, and the millage rate of three point two five would allow us to, I think, it would bring in roughly four point seven million dollars in, in revenue opposed to the, the five. And that's at a ninety-five percent rate. If we were to collect all hundred percent and from my research, we, I don't think we hit the hundred, but we usually collect over the ninety-five percent. We will be okay at the, the four point nine million if we were to get all one hundred percent. But even in a ninety-five percent collection rate, four point seven million is slightly below the, the, the tax revenue the city received last year. And I think that that, that's what's important and the, the budget, I think, can, if, if it's the same approach as we were talking about to prioritize stormwater, I think we can take the same approach here. And I understand the implications of lowering taxes with that American Rescue money that's coming in, but there has to be a clear legitimate path to say that the character of Cape Canaveral, and this is why I brought it up, is we've always tried to, to lower taxes over the year. The history speaks for itself in many respects. And so, to say we don't want to lower because we're in fear of it breaching some sort of criteria obligation, I think there has to be a clear path on how we can lower taxes as if we don't have that money today. I'm willing to lower the, the taxes without it. And I think it's the right thing to do coming off this year, just due to the economic hardships. And I don't think that we are gonna send the city in any type of harms way or, or, or not get the things that we need done. So, I asked this council to consider a three point two five millage rate. Is that roughly a quarter of a mill? And it's gonna take the taxable revenue down from a little over five million down to four point seven million for this year. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I think we should keep it the way that we have it. I think that our finance team has worked very hard to try to keep it quite conservative. We have a lot of projects that we talked about when we had our strategic planning meeting. And we have to keep moving forward. And I don't think that this is outrageous by any means. And I think we should keep it the way that our finance team has deemed reasonable. Thank you.
I'm Councilman Morrison. I think you said it'd be symbolic. We don't, I don't think as a council right now, we need symbolic. John, the difference between three point two and three point five on a million, on a hundred thousand dollar house, what are we talking about?
Well, just to, just to bring the millage down from three, it says it's more significant than, if you, if you're at three point five, sometimes we're just talking about, we're not gonna talk about the library, we're just talking about. Three point five two nine one. And you took, you've taken it down, Councilperson Morrison said three point.
Two.
Two. But we, I've got a chart here that only takes, because that, I can tell you can't sustain that. But the, if I took it down two percent to three point four five eight five, reduce the millage by a hundred and two thousand, which would take that number from five, one, down to four, four nine three two. But Councilperson Morrison's talking about pretty much taking off three hundred some thousand dollars. We can't really, we wouldn't be able to sustain that. Now, what does a hundred and two thousand dollars do to somebody who has a hundred thousand dollar property? Because I didn't go that, down that well, Councilperson Morrison. The, down to three point four eight five, now you take the property for a hundred K down by seven dollars fifty cents. If you go to three point two, three point two is extreme. I don't know. I, I don't, I don't see the funds available to support the budget away.
And if we wanna. Yeah, we, if we want to do the stormwater projects and try to take care of some of these issues, we, we have to, we have to go for it. I mean, we're going to have to have enough funds to cover those projects, stormwater and flooding. And anything that, we don't know what's going to happen, you know, we also have to be prepared in case of a hurricane or other problems that we might have. So, I say keep it the way that our team has financially, conservatively worked this out. Thank you.
Just a point of clarity, what, I was confused on Councilmember Brown's comment on symbolic. What is, what were you saying about symbolic?
What was your point of, what was the point that you made on trying to reduce it?
I think you said that I said it was symbolic and I never, I never said.
Let me stand corrected. I stand corrected on the terminology that you used.
No, it's, it's actually the exact same thing that you said last year during this time and I didn't say it. And so I think it's something that might be, you think that I'm doing this symbolic. I have a home-based business in Cape Canaveral. I live here and our company was, we're, I'm small. It's me and a couple of others. My wife has a company, very small. We were hit very hard. And in the example of seventy-five dollars, I mean, if it's a hundred thousand dollars, we would be standing ovation if we could write a check to a hundred thousand dollars to give out to the city. Well, that's what a tax break would do. And so, to, when tax time comes, what I'm proposing is three hundred thousand dollars. That's one percent of the proposed budget. And so, I'm asking for a one percent decrease in what's proposed. And to say that we can't sustain, I think is a very bold statement. Because I look forward to getting into the next budget workshop and showing how I believe we one hundred percent can sustain. The example for the promenade, which I thought was very well done, the council member Catlin brought up, is an exact example. And it was countered with, well, we're using debt for that. Well, let's use debt for stormwater projects, not for promenade. If we're gonna be, I mean, it actually proves her point even more is that we're, we're taking on debt to do nice staff projects opposed to need to have. And to think that we can't take out three hundred thousand dollars to go down here and to say, you know what? The contingency is set at, I don't know.
Three hundred forty-six thousand. So you'd be wiping, you'd be wiping that out.
I'm not saying that. I, I'm saying, you take, you take fifty thousand dollars off the contingency, right? You take, and you start whittling down the Cherry Down Park acquisition. You, you whittle down on the promenade and you don't move the money. You take debt for stormwater if you have to go down that. And, and you can keep going down the line. Maybe the, the, the certain leisure projects don't get funded the way that we think. But it, to me, is what's important to this community right now are the issues that this council talked about, stormwater, A1A safety, finishing, making it bikeable, walkable, but also understanding the economic hardship that the people are going through. It's, I'm a small business and it stung. And I know that there are people that pay much more taxes. They pay a lot more in their business and they were hit much harder than I was. And I just think it's a, an across-the-board way to help this entire community in a small, small way. It's, it's a small way to the city. It's a one percent decrease in the budget for the city. But I think it'll be a big impact for this community. But if we can't, if we're really gonna say that we can't cut out one percent, I think that, that's a comment that I, I one hundred percent disagree with. I think we can cut it out. It's just a matter of will. In fact, we could cut out much more than one percent out of this budget. And we are doing a lot of projects that we're excited about. But what's more important to me is if it's seventy-five, a hundred fifty, two hundred dollars is that it's three months of water. That's a couple of months or two to three months or even five to six months for the smaller places of electric bills that people have to pay. That means a lot to people who are living paycheck to paycheck. And I know there's a lot of them in this community. And it means a lot to the people who, maybe that's not, you know, fine, I'll pay my taxes. Well, if we can keep that money into the, the community, that is, is more important. Those people that can improve their landscaping, they can pay off debt, they can do things that, that, that I think can, can say, hey, we're trying on our end to help with the economics. I don't see anyone who's struggling to pay their electric bill who's gonna come up and say, wow, look at all these leisure projects that we're making here, the end of the day, when they can't pay their light bill. That's, that's what I'm talking about. And so, I, I think a three point two five mil is an insignificant decrease to the city. And I think it can make a, a moderate impact for the community.
Councilman Morrison, if, if I may just clarify, the, and, and the numbers I'm about to say were not created by your finance director, but were created by the direction the council had me go in and had the city manager going. And here's what I mean by that. Okay, so the promenade over here is an expense of nine hundred K. At least we thought it was. We're still trying to get a letter of intent to see maybe, you know, will they give it to us for nine hundred K? Will they give it to us for a million? Well, what that prompted us to do is, we, like I said, there's nothing being hidden in this budget. The, we had to go, and like you said, you're right, we have to get a loan. We can't do that project without a loan. So I had to put a one point two million dollar estimated loan because I'm not a, I can't predict the future. So, I don't know if this is gonna be a nine hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar expense, a million. Does the guy want one point one million or one point two million? And then council has to make a decision on whether or not they want to pay that. So I did set a one point two million dollar loan in here. If you remove, if we don't, if we don't get the building and you remove the nine hundred thousand dollar expense that's sitting in the CRA, well, the loan in the general fund was legitimately gonna pay for that. But what, what's happened here, what's reflected in this budget in the loan we didn't get is three hundred thousand dollars because we don't know what the, what they're gonna ask in price is gonna be. So, when Councilperson Morrison says it's not that big of a hit, it's a big hit because if this goes away, there's three hundred thousand dollars represented in the general fund here that really isn't there. And you take his three point two five and cut it down three hundred thousand dollars more, we are six hundred thousand dollars out of bed. Okay, so we are counting on this happening. We're counting on getting a loan if council wants to. If not, there's three hundred thousand dollars already that I and the city manager and staff have to figure out how we will, what we'll look at to make us better on the, you know, for that three hundred thousand. And Councilperson Morrison, that's why I qualified earlier in the budget meeting about why we came right down the rollback because everything was predicated on, you know, getting everything done the council wanted to at the strategic retreat and all the other capital projects. So, that's where I, I mean, I respectfully disagree. We're gonna take a three hundred thousand dollar hit in there. That's six hundred thousand dollars and that we can't, we can't sustain that.
If, and if I could just also add on to that, we did propose a budget based on everything the city council wanted for, from the strategic planning retreat. So that's all in there. The loan is in there. We've also identified two significant priority areas. One is urgent, one's important, just tonight. One is, the urgent one is the stormwater. That's not funded in this budget yet. Then the important one is Oak Lane. Obviously, you have to put the urgent in front of the important. But there's two significant expenses we've talked about. But there's two significant expenses we've talked about adding just tonight that weren't even put into this budget. So talk about reducing the millage is, is counterintuitive to what the council's saying they want to do here. Two other points I wanted to make. One is with the American Rescue Act money, the four point two million dollars that we expect to be receiving. I want to reiterate that that money cannot be used to justify a tax decrease. Now, however you want to look at it, if we're reducing taxes and we're receiving this money, there, that opens the potential for scrutiny of a violation there. And the last thing I wanted to mention is tonight, we're only setting a proposed tentative millage rate. It can go down from here at future meetings.
That was my, that was going to be my comment too, uh, city manager. That this is, this was just the first budget meeting and this was a tentative proposed millage. Tentative. This is all still under discussion. Thank you.
Okay.
Um.
True.
I'm, I, I think we should stay at the rollback rate. But I also, you know, when we had the strategic planning meeting and we discussed the promenade, the flooding was not, uh, it was not in our, in our immediate sights. Um, Oak Lane did not get discussed because we didn't know about the residents down there. Um, I just can't, uh, I think, you know, if that, if we roll, if we go below rollback and we're six hundred thousand dollars, that's not good. But do we need to take on debt to buy a property that we're gonna tear down? And why streets are flooding and roads need to be paved. I, I would stay to stay at rollback. And, um, let's get through this. Let's get these projects done. Hopefully the rescue money will help us out. I can't see, uh, going any lower. Um, not with all the projects we just said we needed to get done for our citizens. You know, it's, we got the multi-generation center. We're furnishing that. We got the culture center. We got Estuary Park. All these great things are happening in our city, but we have to take care of the flooding and the paving and the other things as well. And if we stay at rollback, you know, I, I think that's better. That's all I have.
My, my comment is that we can do all the projects with the one percent cut. An easy way to look at it is if you took every line item budget, if it's a thousand dollars and you took off one percent, right? If it was a hundred dollars, you took off one percent. Well, now your budget's ninety-nine dollars. That's what a one percent cut is on every line item. And to say that we can't take one percent off every line item, that's where I challenge. Of course, there's gonna be line items that'll go over and there's gonna become that, that go, fall way under. But I think on average, every year we end up with extra money in the bank that is far greater, that's greater than one percent. And this is the year to recognize that historical trend, in my opinion, and to say, we'll do a one percent cut. So yes, we said, in general, we didn't take up a, a formal vote of the strategic, the, the, the big conceptual idea of these projects. We, we wanted those projects. But it doesn't mean that we're willing to, uh, you know, keep the taxes at a certain rate. We want to figure out how to do them with, with these and to get the other, with a, with a certain tax rate. And I think we all have different ideas on that. And we could have built this city hall differently, but we still could have built a city hall. And so this, the fact that we say we want a city hall, uh, doesn't necessarily mean we want marble tile on the city hall. Just because we want to promenade doesn't mean necessarily we want that promenade. And so we're talking about a one percent cut. I think I've made it clear what I'm asking to do. Um, and I won't, uh, say anymore on it, but thank you for hearing me out.
Okay. Well, I'm happy with what we had. I discussed very thoroughly with Mr. Delio and, uh, his people. I discussed it with Todd. I would like to go to rollback too. We had rollback one year, but I think this would be a year to work with the projects that we do have that we all agreed to do. I agree there is some fluff in there, but that fluff isn't guaranteed. So I'm gonna stay at the three, three point five, like we talked about in our budget meeting to make things happen. And yes, the, uh, building next door might not become a reality. We're just looking to increase the size of the city's campus here, as we've always been wanting to do. But that may not even happen. So it's, it's not part of our, our millage that we're talking tonight. The, uh, stormwater issues to me are very important. I would rather raise the tax a mill or less than a mill to pay for stormwater, but we have the enterprise fund that we have those funds that we're, we're pretty good over on that department. So I'm looking at Oak Lane. Been looking at Oak Lane for gosh knows how long. But like I said before, I just, I even brought up just to throw millies down on it to help those people down on that end. But that was turned down. So I, I don't want to be changing everything because I think the, uh, millies that we set is back to rollback. It brings in enough funds to do what we want to do. There's things that we probably won't do that we can earmark maybe for later for more or whatever. But, uh, I'm, I'm pretty well set on what we have brought to us. Staff has worked hard on it. Everybody's had their say with them. And, um, I'm hearing everybody agree, but now you wanna drop the millies rate, but I'm, I'm not gonna support it. So. We call for a motion if you want to on it or just let it die.
I'll move. Are you ready for a motion, Mayor?
Mr. Morrison's item.
It, it, I think a motion for, from what I would say will be a waste of time. So if you want to move to keep it as is, that's a.
I'll move that we adopt resolution number twenty twenty-one dash zero eight, adopting a tentative proposed millage rate for the levy of ad valorem taxes for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two.
Have a second.
My second.
Hey, we have a motion to keep resolution twenty twenty-one or eight as written on tentative millage. And a second, would you call the rollback?
Councilmember Brown?
Four.
Mayor Hoag?
Four.
Councilmember Kellum?
Four.
Councilmember Morrison?
Against.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond?
Four.
Motion passes four to one. We move on to item number three.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, item number three is to review the approved agreement between the City of Cape Canaveral and Property Registration Champions LLC for the provision of the vacation rental program services and authorize the city manager to execute the same. I have one broad statement here. With every agreement, there's intent. And the intent and the problem that I think triggered this entire third-party support and help was that, as I understand it, the seven-day consecutive prohibition in the city, meaning you can't rent your property for a consecutive seven days, was very difficult for our existing staff and resources to enforce. There were challenges from the legal side. There were issues. Um, but we were grandfathered in after the state preempted local cities. We have the seven day. Um, and so we were in this position of, well, either, you know, my view is you either enforce it to the full or you, uh, you abolish it, you amend it, you get rid of it. And because we had it and the appetite, I think, was to keep it, um, it's more important that we enforce it because when you have a law or an ordinance that's not enforced, that creates frustration in the community. People say, what about the seven-day minimum? What about dogs on the beach? What about this? And what happens is it makes the city, um, services and staff look, uh, bad. And it creates neighbors among neighbors frustration. And I think the greatest way to actually change it for those that are opposed to the seven-day, who says, no, we should be able to rent for six days, five days, private property rights. If I want to rent for one, I can rent for one, is to actually enforce it to its full force because that's when the injustice, as they say, will actually shine light. People, when you start enforcing it, they realize how wrong it is. But the worst-case scenario is we have a law that's there and it just, it's lame duck. It's not getting enforced. We were legitimately struggling, I think, our staff to enforce it. This, uh, organization, uh, was talked about who can close that gap. And my statement is, is that as long as the scope of the agreement stays focused on that, um, that the, the words of the agreement matter is that when this agreement is executed on is that's the outcome. And the things that go beyond and above that is nothing that I ever had intent on. I thought that that was the one issue. The big challenges with short-term rental properties was noise, which we already have an ordinance to enforce that. Um, parking in the streets, which we already have and we don't need anything new to enforce that. We have the, the staff and we have the ordinances in place and trash and litter and some education on vacation rentals, short-term, you know, non-permanent residents don't know the local laws. They might take their dogs in the beach because they don't know it, which are all valid things. They might, you know, drive on the sea oats because they don't know that. And so there was some local education that was needed. And as this evolved, then we started talking about it, the regulations got bigger and wider. And I think that the intent, uh, it went too far. It's been a few months since we've taken this up. And so my request is to put on the record and to say to this council is that we've, we measure the success of this agreement by our seven-day minimums being enforced. And if they are, I would call this in agreement a success. Um, that is my comment. I have no changes. I have faith that the city manager will do that. And I just wanted to put that on the record. And if council disagrees, it's all in the agreement, but I think it's important that that was stated. Thank you.
Mayor, if I could add, I, I think there was a well-summed-up, uh, explanation there. I agree with Councilmember Morrison that the seven-day minimum rental is really the linchpin of all this and everything flows from there. And he's absolutely correct about there are other ordinances, there are ways to enforce those ordinances. Pro Champs and Mr. Mulberry is here tonight. We can ask him any questions. Pro Champs will enforce anything that we have on our vacation rental ordinance. Um, which is to say, if we want to take something out of that ordinance, they'll stop enforcing that too. So for instance, um, the, the maximum overnight occupancy, you know, if, as long as they can track the data, they can report on the data. Um, if we, if we keep that in there, they're gonna keep reporting on it. If we take that out, they're gonna, they're not gonna report on that. They're going to give us any and all data that they have access to. So the agreement with Pro Champs kind of stands alone, separate from the ordinance. We can amend that ordinance if we need to. And correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Mulberry, on all of that. Um, and this ordinance or this, this agreement has, uh, seventeen points here. And if we could, Daniel, go to exhibit A under the scope of work that's attached to this. I wanted to talk about, um, noise and trash and parking as it relates to one of those items on the next page. Right there. Number one, this really gets to all those other things. And this is very assistive for staff. Number one says, Pro Champs will operate a hotline to receive non-anonymous resident concerns and report those concerns to the appropriate designate as directed by the community. Anonymous concerns will not be acted upon. Obviously, there's a new state law that says that we can't accept anonymous group concerns. Those contacts may include but not be limited to owner, property manager, code enforcement, police, sheriff. In addition, the complaint is stored in the system with remainder of the property detail information. So what that does is it gives us another avenue, another set of eyes and ears. Now, the residents of the community who see the trash, who see the parking, who see, who hear the noise can call this hotline. The hotline now is another way for staff to be aware of an issue or for the owner to be contacted about an issue that they may not be where their tenant is creating. So this agreement with Pro Champs, I fully support one hundred percent. I think it's gonna give us all the things that we want and then some. And that's my point I wanted to make.
I think it's the right fit for the City of Cape Canaveral. We've had, uh, many residents speak about the problems with some of the vacation rentals. And I've spoken about the other bigger problem that the more vacation rentals we have, the fewer chances for people to be able to get some affordable housing. And for some of our service people, this is a big issue because a lot of the vacation rental, pe- rental, vacation rentals have been coming into our city. And that means some of the lower-income housing is out. And I think most of you know that I work at St. Vincent de Paul at our Sager's Church. And we have an office off of Cleveland Avenue behind Lido's. That's the only thing I could rent at that point. And, um, we get a lot of people coming in. And it is true, they cannot pay their rents. They cannot pay their electric bills and it's just getting to be more and more difficult. So that I see it all the time. And I've really been a big proponent of affordable housing. And it is a big issue in Cape Canaveral and Cocoa Beach and all over Orlando. And those rents are going up, 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 up. And when they get a new owner in, sometimes they go and, uh, Mayor Emeritus can tell us about what happened down Tyler with some senior citizens. And those senior citizens, they had to get out of paying five or six hundred dollars a month. And when the new owner came in, he jacked at the twelve hundred. Well, when you're on a limited budget, you cannot pay twelve hundred. So what's the result? Those people had to move out. They were longtime residents of Cape Canaveral. So I'm just saying, that's a, affordable housing is a really big issue. So I think once we have the rules in place and the vacation rentals are monitored, I think this will also help with some of the affordable, affordable housing issues in a lot of ways. Because we need to keep those affordable housing options open to people. If we want to keep them in our community. And if we don't have affordable housing, it's another possibility that we could lose our services. That's a big deal.
Okay. Homeownership, homeownership is one of the, what I consider one of the American dreams. And for people to go out and save their hard-earned money. And a lot of people come to this community because it is affordable. And then move next door to somebody that doesn't cherish your property like you do, is out all night partying, is parking in the street. That is something that our citizens are looking for us to go ahead and, and do something about, to go ahead and enforce. I understand what Councilmember Morrison said. We need to put a little bit more teeth into this enforcement. But I think that's gonna come with Pro Champ. I think the way they have it, um, set up, it's gonna be prima facie evidence when these, when these, um, short-term rentals go into the site and do it more than one time, I look for, I don't know the feeling of the council, it's just like a, a deterrent. If you have a deterrent, the first time, a warning, but the second time the fine needs to be steep because obviously you're not, you're not taking to the fact that you're gonna, or to the fact that you're gonna abide by what, what the rule is. I think I agree with everybody deserves a right to, to be a business person and to make money off their property. But when you affect the rights of another citizens, that's where I have a total issue against. And I, I like the idea of Pro, Pro Champ coming in here. I think our citizens need that. I think they're gonna do an excellent job. And I'd just like to see if there's, if there are people that don't want to abide by it, the first or second, the second or third time, that they have a steep penalty. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'm, I'm just glad that we're finally here to this point. Uh, the citizens and residents, full-time residents have been waiting for this, for the city to give them some relief. Um, enforcement is definitely the key. Um, we can put as many laws on the book as we want. If they're not enforced, they're not any good. Um, and if you're a good renter and you follow the law, this should not bother you at all. You should be able to do business as usual. I'm just happy that we're here finally. And I know a lot of people that will be happy that this will be, um, monitored and enforced. Thank you.
Well, I don't have much to say on other. I know it's a problem. We do have problems with it. But, uh, I think with this tracking that we can now, now find out a few more things that we need to look at more stronger. I know there's always parking issues, noise issues with the, uh, rentals. And let me ask a question, Todd. Uh, I don't know if you guys off the top of your head, owner-occupied property, how many properties do we? property, how many properties do we have taxable properties in the city? Does anybody in staff have a?
Dave, do you have that information owner occupied properties? Uh, I think we're asking total number of homesteaded properties or total number of non homesteaded properties as a percentage in the city of Cape Canaveral.
We, are you talking about which ones are rented, uh, short term rentals?
I would, I, I asked two fold question. I asked how many taxable properties are in the city? I don't know who has that info. And how many are not homesteaded? Which could be rentals and not homes or out of state owners. And there's the reason why I'm asking. If Mr. Dickey, he may, he may know.
I'm going to restate your question, Mayor, so I.
How many taxable properties are there in Cape Canaveral? I'm talking about residential.
So residential, your question is of the residential units we have in the city, how many are homesteaded?
What percentage? And how many are homesteaded?
Well, taxable, hopefully a hundred percent of them are taxable. Now, whether, how many of them pay taxes, that's, that's a different question.
Is there eight thousand taxable properties do we know?
I'm, I don't, I don't want to, I'm not going to throw out a guess. I, I don't, I don't have that information at my fingertips.
That information could be gotten from the, from our property appraisers office. And we do, we do get information on all kinds of inform, all kinds of statistics and numbers like that. But we would have to go to them and see what the current, uh, the current uh numbers are. And they could send me a report probably tomorrow.
Yeah, hotels, hotels, just residential.
I've got that number, Mr. Mayor. I um, I actually requested this, just like our director said. So this was twenty nineteen, so it's changed. But in Cape Canaveral, there are eight thousand five hundred forty three properties in all. Two thousand two hundred seventy three have homestead exemption. Properties with the same use code as the homestead properties are four thousand four hundred nine do not have homestead exemption. And so the four thousand four hundred nine are the hotels, the, the commercial. And so two thousand two hundred seventy three divided by eight thousand five hundred forty three total properties, and that includes commercial, is, is going to give us the percentage of homestead. If you subtract out the forty four oh nine, it'll tell you the percentage of residential properties, which I could do quickly, but roughly twenty, two thousand two hundred seventy three residential homestead properties. That's from the Brevard County Property Appraisers. Um, so that means thirty four percent of the total residential properties claim a homestead exemption. Here it is. I, I figured it out. It's six thousand six hundred eighty two residential properties out of that eighty five hundred roughly. And two thousand two hundred seventy three of those six thousand six hundred eighty two residential properties are homestead.
Well, it's changed a little bit because uh, the last time I did inquire and that was, I don't know, a year ago. It was like thirty three percent of the city was homesteaded.
That's what.
So my point on residential, I'm not, you know.
That's right. It's thirty four percent.
Oh, it was thirty three, maybe two years ago when I checked it. And I only ask that reason because it kind of throws back to the, uh, the taxpayers are the, are the homesteaders basically that are here that would be affected with all the goings on that we do. The renters are not taxpayers as per se for, they have alarm tax. So I just wanted to bring that point out, that there's a lot of rental properties in this city. So I don't know how many are B and Bs.
Are five hundred to seven hundred are short, are vacation rentals, and then you got a lot of long term rentals as well.
Right.
About seventy to eighty percent of those will not live in Cape Canaveral area or probably even Brevard County.
Right, right. So I, I threw that out there just for general information for the council. To, when you start talking about lowering your taxes and raising taxes and there's not many taxpayers that live in this city, but they do pay taxes. And, and the people that live here are mostly rental people. And it'd be at B and Bs, be it by the year, by the month or however they rent, so. I, I'm, I'm well aware of the B and B projects. We fought for that thing for years and it was like, but at that time, the city had control basically when we did B and Bs. Now we don't have control. Well, control we do have is a little bit of the ordinance that we had in place before the city jerked a rug off from underneath everybody or the county, the state, I'm sorry. I got a card here. I don't know what is. Item number three, which we're discussing, is that? I had another one on eleven. This card is number three. This just got handed to me. It's, but we're, we're discussing right now, so I'll have to wait till I call this up. I don't have anything other to add to this other than I know, I know the situation we're in. And I just brought up that information to you for chew on a little bit because that pertains to part of what you're discussing. And um, if we don't have anything further to discuss, I have a card. Otherwise, if you got something, did you have anything? Wes, do you have anything?
Yes, just one question, it maybe for the city manager, the representative is how is this going to enforce the seven day minimum different than what we were doing prior? It, just to understand a scenario of an example of how this is going to work. And then if our city attorney can maybe weigh in on, is that sufficient evidence to prosecute and to move forward with?
Mr. Murray is at the microphone to answer some questions.
Please, Mr. Mulberry, yes.
Yeah, so we're going to be collecting data on a, a daily basis from Airbnb, VRBO and other short terminal sites. Um, over ninety percent of short terminal listings are on Airbnb or VRBO. But we'll look at the other ones as well. Um, and then what you got to do is you got to monitor those sites on a regular basis because these bookings will come on and off and we try to catch them before they come off. Um, landlords are pretty tricky about it once they know they're being monitored. But we'll, we'll do it at random times and very frequently. So we'll catch that, those bookings as they come in through these sites and we'll store that data, do screenshots of the data and we'll provide that to the city. Most of your short term rental listings right now are advertised as offering less than seven days right now. We did some rudimentary search of that. We'll do a lot more once we are partnered together on this. But um, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll catch some people and then they'll argue that that wasn't real. And we'll have to legally decide that we have enough. Um, we'll provide everything we have. But that will be the data, it'll be the booking data that's on the short terminals sites that we capture.
So like screenshots, I, I've seen what you're talking about. I've seen people say two days, three days, big letters. And a screenshot of that.
Be more than that. Well, I'm sorry, I didn't like to interrupt. There, there'll be the calendars that are on there as well. You get into the counters. I want you booked. That's actually calendared in there. So we're pulling that calendar data in as well. So yes, we'll get the advertisement. We'll also get the bookings that are calendared on the side as well.
Got it.
Daniel, if we could forward to item fifteen, if you could scroll to the next page, I think this is on point. Says um, pro champs will collect evidence, identify, notify any unregistered STR properties with an obligation to register as well as those properties in violation of the community's regulatory requirements. Through the STR platform, the community has access to the listing report for all non compliant properties and owner information. Additionally, we, pro champs electronically notify the community each time evidence of a new non compliant property is located and each time evidence is collected, a non compliant property or registered property is in violations of the city's regulatory requirements. And that includes the minimum seven days. Reports shall be in a probable format and suitable for uses of evidence to support city code enforcement efforts.
Okay, so there's not going to be a, a log or anything. I think that we talked about that. I guess I, I know that this was, it wasn't as easy as we thought. And obviously, this is your specialty and where you focus. For our city attorney, I'd like to ask, have you had a chance to review the type of evidence? Do you believe that this is going to be sufficient to take us further and, and uh prosecute and enforce properly?
Um, I have, I've worked with the staff. I have reviewed some of uh their um database um screen, printouts and things like that. If, as, as we discussed before, when we were going through the vacation rental ordinance, the problem the city has is, is just being able to compile relevant data regarding the seven day rental. This uh company will automate um through crawling on the web to pull out um various data on all of the, most of the vacation rentals that are operating within the city. And that data gets synthesized down into these reports. And staff will be able to monitor this data, some, some like potential violations will be flagged as I understand it in the reports. That doesn't necessarily mean you, the, you know, the prosecutors, the code enforcement staff don't have to exercise human judgment. They're going to have to look at that data. There, there's going to require some brain power. But the city will be capturing data automated, in an automated fashion, that it doesn't have today. So we talked about getting a tool to help the staff, you know, prosecute those types of violations or get property owners into compliance without even bringing a case. This is going to provide so much more data than the city could ever do manually on its own, in my opinion. And you know, staff has reviewed the, reviewed the uh, the printouts and database information as well. So um, better than, much better than what you have. At the end of the day, we'll see if it brings up the com, the compliance rate. And if necessary, the special magistrate, I'm sure will have a test case or two in short order. And uh, the special magistrate can weigh the evidence and uh, hear the testimony and see where, see where it gets the city code enforcement on prosecutions. The end of the day, and it's, it's not working out, the data is not helping you bring properties into compliance. You all will have a, you know, a decision to make at that point when you get a chance to reevaluate where you stand. But you know, I, I think this is worth a, a, a serious shot, given the seven day consecutive uh, you know, minimum rental requirement that the city has.
Thank you. Very helpful. And so that makes sense is that it's more data than we've got today. You're going to help us have, and honestly, it's we'll see. And I guess my question to you is, have you dealt with the seven day minimum or a consecutive day of minimum in another community? And were you able to successfully prosecute?
We have not dealt with the seven day minimum. Uh, we've had other minimums like a uh, three day minimum.
Okay.
And uh, we did help them collect evidence and prosecute, yes. Um, and good news is that we're local. I'm actually up here in Cape Canaveral. I'll, I'll come over to a hearing and, and provide the evidence and testify if necessary. We've got, like I said, fifty agents, most of them live here in Brevard, some of them live in Cape Canaveral. So yes, we're local. We can support you guys. We have done this before. Uh, we've done lots of enforcement cases across the country. Um, some on the, not many on the uh, seven day or three day, none on the seven day, but some on the three day. So yes, I think we can be successful at doing it. There will be some challenges for sure. So I don't want to set too high a bar, but yes, we will be able to get some enforcement going.
Yeah.
In your opinion, do you think a seven day is easier enforcing a three day? It seemed like to me the seven day would be easier to enforce because there's less.
Absolutely.
All right, okay.
Yes, three day can be argued just about, oh, sorry. Um, there's a lot of angles they can take.
Right, not with the seven day.
Right.
I, I do like that you're local. That's an important point. Now, do you have one headquarters or office?
Yes, our, our office is in Brevard County, um, just outside of the Melbourne city limits off of Wickham.
Thank you.
From a contracting standpoint, the manager can elaborate, but there were two factors regarding the company other than the fact that they captured this data and they have a system to capture this data as one. Um, the city is currently using them. So to add that another module, so to speak, to an existing, you know, operation that the city has was uh, improves the efficiency and, and getting it up and running. And number two, the fact that they are local, it's nice to have data and reports, but I can guarantee you um, we will need to bring somebody physically in to testify or provide affidavits. And the fact that they are local and some of the other companies really didn't have that local presence, getting a physical, again, a witness physically present at a code enforcement hearing might have been a little bit more challenging for us. We factored that into consideration.
Real quick, I just have one question real quick. If that person is posted on multiple sites, is that considered one violation? Let's say they post on the four different sites to rent that place as for seven days. So is that one violation or you've got four separate violations?
We would, uh, we're, that, we would treat it as a non compliant property and we would provide that to the city. And then the city would have to decide how they want to um prosecute that from an enforcement perspective. But we would definitely track that as a property that's not compliant with all the evidence from the different listing sites as supporting evidence.
Okay. Mr. Mulberry, correct me if I'm wrong, but they can only make one booking through one site. They can't make the same booking on two different sites.
Well, if they do, then those sites are, you know, they have issues because you're going to have double bookings. But I mean, I'm sure it's possible. There's some sites that aren't connected, but most of them are connected on the backend. So yes, that's not possible.
Thank you.
Do you have anything further?
Nope, that was it. And that's the number one issue that we hope to accomplish here is the seven days and we'll see. And good luck. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Before we, I have a card, uh, before we go for a motion on it. Rhonda Berinder, you wanted to speak on this.
You know, of course, I've attended other meetings and, and um, I just find it when we're talking about budgets and we're talking about spending and we're talking about all of this, it all comes down to again, that this is a two mile by two mile area that you guys have to spend your thirty million dollars in. I'm finding that uh, I just don't understand how four cases that when, when everybody was, when, when push came to shove, there's always been four complaints. These four properties are these four properties. And it was always the four properties, no more than that per month, that you were getting complaints on. Uh, how this has catapulted into the city council thinking that, I mean, when did you become surveillance operatives? That now you have to monitor all seven hundred when you've only been getting four complaints. You're sending monies out to other companies instead of just simply hiring, keeping the money within and hiring your own person to do what was, it should be simple in a two mile by two mile area. Um, I mean, Cocoa Beach is fifteen miles by fifteen miles in comparison. It's a very small area to manage this. And, and you know, I've discussed before, majority of these vacation homes have been operating for more than five years. They've been designated, they've been um, they've been allowed to operate. But like I said, something else is going on. It doesn't all add up at this point. And the type of surveillance that you are all considering doing um, doesn't fit the crime of four complaints per month for these vacation homes. I don't know. I just think that there's uh, um, there's a, an alternative to that. And as far as, I, I'm glad you mentioned the affordable housing that you're that you, because you had mentioned that a couple of meetings ago and, and I, other people wanted me to see if I could get you to elaborate on that. But affordable housing, isn't it con, in contrast, it's contrary to raise millage rates up on property owners that own rentals for even for leased rentals in this area because they're usually not homesteaded and they're paying more higher taxes than the regular people here. So you're increasing their millage rate and you do not think that's being passed on to the renters? So I don't, and I'm not sure exactly when you say that you are pro affordable housing. I do want you to elaborate on that because I don't think you live in an affordable housing area. And I think that um, I think that there are things, if you were, want to put your money where that effort should go, um, eight million dollars shouldn't have been spent on a building over here. You know, on Orange Avenue, eight million dollars could, you guys could go and buy that uh Wells Fargo building, level it and build affordable housing. It would be a perfect place for build affordable housing. Parking situations, Jefferson, there's three lots on Jefferson. There are only seven hundred thousand that you could build a brand new instead of buying one point two million dollar uh, whatever you're going to do to tear down and build something else to extend your city outreach. But I'm just saying there's, the, the punishment doesn't fit the crime. And what you're about ready to do doesn't fit what has been transpired, what's been transpiring in this city for complaints and reported complaints. That's all I'm saying.
Thank you. All right. We've heard the issue. We've heard from the public. And we need a motion to close it out. And we need a motion to close it out.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanna, um, I'm happy to make that motion and emphasize that from Miss Behringer, Rhonda, who just spoke is the, the vote that I believe sent this down the wrong direction isn't the vote that's happening tonight. The vote was all of the long list of regulations that we passed uh, a couple of months ago. And that ship has sailed um, because I think it went way beyond what we needed to do and focus and it did grow. So tonight, we're talking about uh, having help to enforce those laws. And I do agree with the enforcement on the seven day. But um, those other areas, it, it did, I agree with you. It, it went beyond the scope of the problem that, that we were addressing. And so um, with that, um, we'll be watching it. And I think amendments, things that might be changed, we, we can do. But I, I hope that the seven day minimum gets enforced and or changed. So one or the other, but the way it is today, it's too tou- it's not working. So I move that we adopt and, and pass the Pro Champs. Um, let me get the formal. I move that we adopt and approve the agreement between the City of Cape Canaveral and Property Registration Champions for the provision of rental Vacation Rental Program Services and authorize the city manager to execute the same.
Just a second.
A second.
My second.
We have a motion by Mr. Morrison and a second by Mr. Brown to pass the agreement between Pro Champs and the City of Cape Canaveral. You call the roll, please?
Councilmember Brown?
Four.
Mayor Hoag?
Four.
Councilmember Kellum?
Four.
Councilmember Morrison?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond?
Four.
Davis Morrison, I think four.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the next item is number four, Resolution Number Twenty Twenty One Oh Nine. Amending the uh, appendix schedule fees in the city code to include registration and inspection fees related to vacation rentals under section one ten four eighty-six of the city code. So um, this one is directly related to uh, the, the agreement that we, we just passed and to those regulations, short-term rental regulations we passed months back. Um, the reason I wanted to pull this is because I think that this is a good example of going too far. Um, I don't think raising the fees on property owners is a good way to enforce the seven day minimum. I can see how a registration process is gonna happen. And, and from, from my perspective, I think the fees are too, too high. And I don't like the, the difference between the homestead and the non-homestead. I think that's somewhat discriminatory. And I think if you're gonna find them, you find them equal. You don't give a break if you're owner-operator. And so the fees that we have today, if we go there in the agenda, and thank you so much, Daniel, for uh, following along. It's very helpful. But where the fees are laid out in this agenda summary down just a little bit, um, trying to get to it right.
Go back, Daniel.
Yes, thank you. Just go up, right in the sum, right there. Thank you. So the annual registration fee is three hundred dollars for a non-homesteaded unit and two hundred dollars for a homestead unit. I propose that we make that one hundred dollars and across the board, one hundred dollar fee. We can raise them later. Um, if there has to be a certain minimum to meet the agreement, I would say one twenty-five would be the, the minimum, because I did see where approaching it collects a fee. But if they're administering it, they're doing the work. I don't think the city necessarily needs a large cut or a piece of the cut. And it's, that's the whole point of outsourcing um, this. And the revenues, so the difference in, in them is not feasible, but I definitely think we need um, a lower fee, i- in my opinion, I think three hundred dollars every year. Uh, uh, and then two hundred dollars if you, if you're homesteaded, that, that to me is a, is a bit excessive. And it does, I mean, how does that? What that does is it makes it more difficult to have short-term rentals, which I think is the real goal of some people that's not being spoken, is we wanna make it as difficult as possible to have short-term rentals. And I get that, people might feel that way. I don't think that's right. And so I propose we go to a one hundred or one hundred twenty-five across the board fee. Um, the safety inspection at seventy-five dollars, I would propose that we cut that by fifty percent as well. And the uh, re-inspection as well by fifty percent. Um, the late registration fee, I think uh, ten percent typically, or twenty-five dollars would be at the most, a fifty percent cut there. And the owner-agent transfer fee, um, I don't, I remember we chatted about this with our city manager. I don't understand why transferring has a fee at all. But again, another fifty percent reduction there on a, on a property owner is, is what I proposed to this council. Thank you. I didn't envision coming in with these excessive fees for, for property owners. Um, can be cash flow positive to meet the, the services, but I think if we're properly enforcing the seven days, that those fines that will come in, if they can do a good job, then we're gonna see prosecutions with our magistrate, fines will come in. That needs to be factored in, was this worth it or not? Ultimately, I think that that's the, the greatest way to do it is by getting fees through actual results. Not putting that burden on these property owners to pay upfront. And if we never enforce anything, uh, then these property owners through their fees, there's gonna be short-term rental owners that abide by all the rules. They honor the seven day, they do everything right. They have to pay the three hundred dollars. And it'll probably be enough money to, to fund the Pro Champ service contract. But I would say, no, let's all have some skin in the game. Don't penalize them. Um, cut these fees by fifty percent and the registration onto a hundred. And if they're prosecuting, I think that that, those results will speak for themselves. So that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor, I think it's worth clarifying that Pro Champs gets one hundred dollars for every registration flat. So um, if, if the registration fee to the owner was one hundred dollars, they'd get their one hundred dollars. If the registration fee was two hundred dollars, they'd get their one hundred dollars and the city would get the other different, the difference, the other hundred dollars to help offset the cost of code enforcement. I just wanted to clarify that for everyone here.
Yeah, and that was why I said if we need to go up to one twenty-five to meet that hundred. Sure, but I thought that, like, the city is, we're outsourcing it and.
Mayor, I'd like to add something too, if I could. Yeah, I, I, I think also that, I think the council needs to keep in mind that there's an equity issue here. Um, these fees that we're proposing are what are considered user fees. Those folks who use these services and demand these services are gonna be paying for these services. Right now, everybody in the city, all of these property owners are paying for this service. And so I think that the council needs to keep that in mind, that these, these fees, these user fees are structured for the short-term rental folks to be paying for their own, um, let's call it uh, the services and the um, the monitoring for, of, of their operations. Right now, all the money that the city spends on monitoring and, and, and watching short-term rentals and enforcing short-term rentals, those come out of the general fund. And as we all know, I'm sure the council understands this, who pays into the general fund is all of our homeowners. So there's an equity issue here as well. And um, um, you know, those rates were structured to pay for Pro Champs. And also to pay for, and, and the, the agenda cover discusses this, to pay for, there's, there's additional costs to this, to monitoring and to enforcing our short-term rental issues be above and beyond Pro Champs. We're gonna have city attorney fees. We're going to have special magistrate fees. We're going to have costs of our code enforcement officers, as you heard our city attorney mention a little while ago. Pro Champs provides the data and the, the, the documentation. Our code enforcement staff is going to have to synthesize that, go through that, prepare it. Um, and there's costs there for code enforcement staff. That's why these fees are set this way. It's not to be a boogeyman on the uh, the s- short-term rental owners. It's an equity issue. We're trying to remove the costs from all of our homeowners in the City of Cape Canaveral and put them on the users that are demanding and requiring these services of the city. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I reply to that? Because I think it's important. If you're tru- if we're truly going to remove the cost, then let's remove the cost. So if these fees are going to be now paid by these owners at seventy-two thousand dollars, at three hundred dollars a head, then let's lower taxes out of the, out of all these property owners by seventy-two thousand. We're not saving the property owners any money. We're gonna increase fees, we're gonna create a new revenue structure, and we're gonna keep taxes the exact same. And so if we want, if I wanna look a citizen in the eyes and say, hey, this short-term rental at three hundred dollars is an equity issue. We're gonna lower the, um, we're gonna hit three hundred dollars a, a pop every single year coming in. And guess what? We get to lower your taxes by this amount. That would be an appropriate balancing of the equity. But that's not what we're doing, this council. And, and I, I would love to do that. That, I agree with you, Mr. Dickey, that that would be a good way to justify it, but that's not, that's not what happened. We're keeping taxes the same and, and we're adding new revenue. And what are we gonna do? We're gonna just keep figuring out new ways to spend the money. And so to me, the property owner that pays taxes is paying the same amount of taxes. And it's, it, that money's now gonna be spent on other things, but we're not giving the people a true break, in my opinion. So.
Well, I completely disagree with you, Councilmember Morrison.
Um, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, finally add.
I see a lot of use uh, uh, of these places. And then there's a lot of other things that require cities' attention other than just tracking. But go, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, the, the three hundred dollars and the two hundred dollars doesn't seem to be an excessive amount. If you look at the total picture, if um, I don't know what the percentage of these short-term rentals are being rented for what percentage of the year, but let's just say it was half the year. Aren't some of these short-term rentals and owners charging two hundred dollars a night to stay in? So this is, this is miniscule. I will tell you personal knowledge that I know of short-term rentals charging five hundred dollars a night uh, occupied over half the year. Go ahead and do the math. And um, the three hundred dollars or two hundred dollars doesn't seem to be excessive in any, any respect. Uh, and the city does, the city at least gets a return based on all the other uh, expenses, as Mr. Dickey has said, which, you know, a city must always look for additional revenues to survive. And in this case, we're, we're trying to, uh, we, we may gain additional revenues, but it's covering the cost of under five or six of the items that Mr. Dickey just said. So I don't, I don't think there's any inequity going on here.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a comment. Uh, I, I would like to refer us to the chart that's right after the page. Um, for item number four, that chart explains what different cities are charging for registration fee, renewal, safety, inspection, et cetera. And we're middle of the road. I mean, we're lower than a lot of them. So I just wanted to point that out. I think that chart is a very valuable tool. So I think what we're doing is reasonable.
I just wanna point out, look at the names of the cities. I've been big on this in the beginning. Melbourne Beach is the only one that's in Brevard County. We know that market data, that's like the Pro DM rate that Councilmember Kellum put forth, is when you go to a New York City or you go to a Fort Lauderdale or a historical St. Augustine, those rates are gonna be higher, the cost is higher. Melbourne Beach is probably one of the higher-end areas of Brevard County. And so I, I'm wondering, you know, what the rates are from uh, communities that are nearby uh, us.
Melbourne Beach is actually smaller, I believe.
But it's one of the more affluent areas in the county. It's a very tiny city.
That's correct. So we aren't charging five hundred.
Four thousand, I don't even, it's just a few thousand residents. And so, but just look at the property values in Melbourne Beach and compare it to Cape Canaveral. It's, it's dramatic. Look at the property values in Fort Lauderdale, Hollywood, St. Augustine. So this is, in my opinion, unless there was a logic on pulling some of the premier cities, world destinations in Florida, St. Augustine, Fort Lauderdale, that I don't think the da- the data looks the same when you compare it to communities like Cape Canaveral with similar property values. So.
Mayor, if I may.
Everybody has the same problems.
I'm, I'm not sure there are other communities in Brevard County that have registration programs like this. And Dave, correct me if I'm wrong, is the gentleman from Pro Champs here? Maybe you could answer that.
So their fees are zero in other communities.
They may not have a registration.
That, that, that's what the record needs to be said, is they don't even.
Seminole, Seminole County has a three hundred dollar registration fee. They're close. I mean, they're not in Melbourne. The average is about three hundred dollars across the country. Go up in the Northeast, you're gonna get up to about five hundred dollars. But yes, I mean, I'm just gonna look at specific cities or whatnot. But three hundred seems to be about the average that we're seeing in Florida and across the country.
Any further discussion, anybody?
Just if you're looking for a motion, I'm happy to make one. Mr. Mayor, I move that we reduce the fees by fifty percent across the board and change the uh, non-homestead and homestead um, to one fee. So non-homestead and homestead would be charged one hundred fifty dollars. And then the rest of the fees would be reduced by fifty percent as well.
Okay, yeah, second. Anybody want to second the motion? Nobody second the motion? Motion died. Everybody shaking their head no.
As written.
As written. As written is gonna be good enough.
I'll second.
Hey, we have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Raymond to accept Resolution Twenty Twenty One Oh Nine, and we have a second by Councilwoman Kellum. You call the roll?
Councilmember Brown?
Four.
Mayor Hoag?
Four.
Councilmember Kellum?
Four.
Councilmember Morrison?
Against.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond?
Four.
Okay, that concludes our consent agenda. Seven thirty. We're going to public hearings. Item number eight is ordinance twenty twenty-one. Mr. Garganese, the first reading.
Hey, Mr. Mayor. This is uh, ordinance number twenty-nine dash uh, twenty twenty-one, ordinance of the City Council of the City of Cape Canaveral, Florida. Amending chapter forty-six library of the city code related to library board, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, incorporation into the code, severability and ineffectivity. This is first reading of this ordinance. Just generally, maybe staff wanna talk about some of the specifics regarding the existing library board. But generally, um, the city um, created a library um, many years ago. And uh, the city uh, created this library, uh, subject to previous statutory authority, which is no longer um, in existence due to home rule. Um, and then the, the library evolved over time and was ultimately transferred um, to Brevard County to operate. And the code has a lot of old language in it that goes back to the original creation of the library board relying on old statutory authority that is no longer um, you know, applicable. So in one respects, this ordinance uh, create, uh, removes that old language from, from the code. The other issue that this ordinance addresses is the fact that you have at the library um, a limited number of people to work with the friends of the library and, and work on the library board. And that has created a practical problem with respect to the sunshine law, number one. Number two, the library board, uh, when the county took it over, by in a local agreement with the city, the city agreed to at least have an advisory board that um, will compare public input from local citizens and provide recommendations to the county library board. So that, that, that has been basically the function of the city's library board, but they're having a hard time um, with, with, you know, staffing and complying with the sunshine law. So this Um, with, with staffing and complying with the sunshine law. So this ordinance. Would in essence make the city council, the library board in order to comply with the contractual um. Obligation with the county. So the city council, you know, from time to time during the year would have. An opportunity to take input from the public and then decide whether or not it wants to make any recommendations to the county. Um, library, uh, library board. And, you know, that's what this ordinance does. Now, you, you may want to talk about some of the practical problems, but I, I think that. That's the general intent and purpose of this ordinance.
Polly.
I, I really don't have anything um specific to add uh beyond one of the. One of the things that came up at the last library board meeting was the chairperson asked. Um, as a volunteer with Friends of the Library nonprofit, if she was able to participate in fundraising activities. As a volunteer of that organization, which kind of falls into a very um. Sketchy area because she's also advising in a public capacity. So we're kind of tying the hands of the volunteers that we do have. And by you guys entertaining um. The very occasional uh agenda item, we can allow our volunteers to serve in their fullest capacity and participate in the fundraising activities and. Just do whatever jobs need to be done around the library that the staffing over there can't, can accommodate.
And I would recommend the council not become members of the Friends of the Library Board.
Please.
All right, council, Nikki, or me, Angela?
I, it's fine. It's fine the way that it's written. And I think that this should work.
Agree with that?
Yeah, I, I would like to see. Citizens serving on this board that would agree to the same thing. We don't. That when they serve on the library board, they don't become friends of the library. If that's difficult. Um, the same ask that you asked us, you would think moving forward, hopefully we can find citizens that says. You know, have an agreement that, because we, the city doesn't want to be in this situation, certainly don't want to put them in a sunshine law situation to say that. They're mutually exclusive. Don't, don't serve on them, you know, for your, for your one year, three year term. Um, because. Having the community of Cape Canaveral on boards, more boards, I think, is more citizen involvement in the library is probably one of the. You know, compared, it's not quasi judicial, it's not like a, you know, code enforcement board or, or planning and zoning certainly. And so I, I hope. If this is what needs to happen, um, I'm happy to. Step in into that role and I don't see it being overly burdensome. Um, and the. Hope though, I think would to be try to get citizens to. Run for that board. And I guess my question would be. Say we have one citizen that doesn't want to be on the Friends of the Library Board. Could Mayor Hoag step down or I step down and they take it and they're, they serve with the remaining council or would that create?
Now, this would make the city council to perform the functions of the board. So the elected city council, there would only be the elected members.
Okay, got it.
And, and one, one thing that I don't know if we had the, the character space to explain, because there was, there was a lot of. This, this agenda item's been circulating for a while because we were trying to get so much research under our belt, but bless you. The other thing that didn't, that, that kind of came up is that, that. One sixty seven chapter that was repealed, when that was enacted, that actually spelled out very specifically that a city council couldn't service that board. And with that repeal, now not only could we have a board that was represented by our residents that are elected officials. But we really didn't even have to have a board to begin with. We're just accommodating an agreement. And providing a venue for our local people that may not be able to, to hop on the bus and go down to Vieira to, to be represented. Um, an opportunity to engage. And another um item that came up because we had. Um, we are now down to three people on that board. But prior, almost all the people that served on that board walked into the library almost every day. And as volunteers, they are constantly exchanging ideas and those people are more invested and know what. The members of the community are looking for in their library. That's their audience. So.
It's hard to be invested in a library at an arm's length.
Yeah, I mean, I went to the library. It was once a year. The, the library, and it was a great meeting and they were engaged and excited and they lo- they truly loved it far. And that was the other concern is, of course, I love the library, but we have. I don't want to see a loss of specialized passion on the library when we're dealing with a wide variety of big, sometimes co- controversial and like I said, quasi judicial matters. That it's um, it'll be a commitment out of this to try to. Fill the shoes in the same passion and zeal for the library. I love our library and I want to make it better and I. Maybe it would make sense to have a, a talk with some of them. And try to understand their goals and what they were trying to accomplish. It's just a new engagement piece on our responsibility. So. I will do what I need to do and thank you for answering my questions.
Mayor, I just want to add that both the library's director and the president of the Friends of the Library are in support of this initiative. The attachments are attached. Their letters of support. And I'm sure they're counting on the city council being supportive of the Friends of the Library and continuing to support the library.
Yeah, and we, when we act as the board here, they can come and bring their ideas and. They can go back and talk about it all they want because they're not under sunshine.
And, and in, in truth, if anybody ever did have a problem with the library or have suggestions, they could have come to you guys anyway. So and obviously.
Tough.
No problem with it. Hey, anybody? Any, through discussing, we can look. Go out to the public. Anybody, nobody fell out of court on this item, but does anybody want to mention something? If not, I'll bring you back to the dais for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, can I just ask one question? Molly, do you know how many people are on the Friends of the Library? How many members?
We do not, and we've asked them to provide a copy of their list because we were in part of our research for this and they do not maintain a, a current list.
And do you know how, how often they meet?
I do not.
Well, I, I just, you know, it's always good to have a board and the citizens input, but it seems practical to me to do that and. And invite them, you know, uh, if they have any issues to.
They're all on that board and they're all over there working.
Yeah.
Discussion begins and they're in the sunshine.
Yeah, that's true.
That's the problem. Otherwise, they're a good functioning board. They've always been there. It's always been a bunch of good people. But we need a motion to close the ordinance out.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt ordinance twenty nine twenty one amending section forty six twenty six of the city code transferring the duties of the. City of Cape Canaveral Library Board to the city council of the city of Cape Canaveral.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a second and uh, a motion and a second by. Ms. Raymond and Ms. Morrison for the first reading of the ordinance twenty nine twenty one. You call the roll, please.
Councilmember Brown.
For.
Mayor Hoag.
For.
Councilmember Kellum.
For.
Councilmember Morrison.
For.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond.
Uh, number nine is ordinance number thirty two twenty one amendment sections two sixty, two sixty two to code. Mr. Garganese, that's the first reading.
Yep, ordinance number thirty two dash twenty twenty one and ordinance of the city council of the city of Cape Canaveral, Florida amending section two dash two sixty. And two dash two sixty two of the city code related to the application procedure for code enforcement lien satisfactions and releases. Including authorizing the special magistrate to make recommendations to the city council regarding such applications. And providing the city manager the authority to grant de minimis reductions for certain small liens. Providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinance and resolutions incorporation into code severability and an effective date. Um, this ordinance uh is first reading. It, it proposes uh two changes to the. Process for um satisfying code enforcement liens and seeking uh lien releases. Code enforcement lien releases. Uh, one, it establishes a de minimis um exception. Um, they would authorize the city manager to um. Settle code enforcement liens of less than fifteen hundred dollars and as an incentive for prompt settlement to. Uh, grant a um, a twenty percent of reduction in, in the lien amount. In order to um, you know, promote prompt settlement of, of the liens. Uh, and there are two conditions. One, the property owner would have to be in compliance and then two. Uh, the manager could only exercise this authority if the council hasn't already made a decision. On a code enforcement lien release um or reduction request. The other. The other proposed amendment is simply to um authorize the special code enforcement special magistrate. To make recommendations to the city council regarding all other uh lien satisfaction and release. Slash reduction requests. So those, those are the two proposed changes to the process. I'm happy to answer any questions. Yes.
How did you decide on fifteen hundred dollars?
Uh, yeah, yeah. Okay, um. It was just going to be a de minimis, um, you know, uh, exception. Some cities actually delegate the responsibility to, to the city manager, subject to appeal to the city council. I think we talked about that. Couple of years ago. Um, but you know, the point here would be on the small liens. Uh, on the, and we picked the number of fifteen hundred after a discussion to try to create a de minimis standard. Um. You know, we pulled fairly, frankly, pulled the number out of the air, trying to figure out what, based on, you know, based, based on, I guess, some experiences, like what would be considered. Small. Um, and that was it.
Is this common? That was another question I had. And how many of these fifteen hundred dollar liens would you have per year?
We, we typically don't get lien requests for that amount. Um, the city council sees all the lien requests currently. So. Um, you've all been on this council for a while. You've seen the types of numbers that come rolling in. In fact, we've got another one, the next item. That's the typical thing. We usually don't see small lien requests being, then the reason is because they're so small, they just soon pay them and move, move forward with their lives, you know?
So you're saying then that the people are already in compliance and they've already paid whatever fee they have to pay?
Yeah, they would have to be in compliance before they could request any lien reduction.
And some liens. Just get recorded and that are just out there um in, in the record that are not satisfied. And the, you know, that happens as well. I mean, the property owners, some property owners. You know, will, will maintain their property subject to a code enforcement lien and not make the payment. Until, you know, the property goes up for sale or it gets foreclosed upon. Um, so, you know, again, we were just. We were doing, we were doing this change that the, the, the subject came up about. Creating a diminishment, de minimis exception to try to, you know, deal with these, these smaller matters when and if they come up.
It went and if is the important part. They probably won't. They haven't been. But it also, it doesn't make sense to go through. The process of bringing it to city council and the expense involved in bringing it to city council for such a small potatoes amount. We can handle at a lower level. Usually they just pay the full amount anyways, but this is, I think this is a, a good thing, a good tool for a just in case. We can play with the number. We can change that number if we want to. But uh, I think it's a good practice, uh, even if it's not very often.
I mean, some communities actually have adopted amnesty provisions. You know, they've allowed limited periods of time where. There are pending code enforcement liens that are recorded and they uh, you know, forget about the de minimis exception. They afford. Certain eligible, you know, lien holders, the, the ability to just come in and seek amnesty, amnesty for. A, a much substantial reduction without even going through a hearing process. There's some communities have an abundance of code enforcement liens that just are recorded and that sit out there that encumber properties. There's, there's, there's different ways to kind of handle the process and one suggestion is to create this de minimis exception.
And a fifteen hundred dollar lien usually probably is not even a month's worth of non-compliance. If the.
Right.
Look at the history of the, of that board. Used to set liens, a hundred dollars a day, seventy five dollars. Hundred fifty dollars the first day, fifty dollars the second.
Yeah.
And by, by a much time, you'd be exceeding fifteen hundred dollars. So it would be kind of a. Like you said, diminishes amount, but. If, if it comes down to releasing anything, as long as it cover, as long as I like to discover. Basically cover cities' costs at least.
Yes.
And I wouldn't, I don't know how much cities' cost would be on something of that nature. I mean, one meeting, maybe. What would one meeting be? Eighty, ninety dollars?
The ordinance require, the ordinance requires that whenever there's a lien reduction that at, at the very least, all costs are, are recovered.
Yeah, just the cost.
You know, it, it's assumed that the lien was. Fifty, you know, one thousand four hundred and ninety nine dollars. It basically authorizes the manager as an incentive to get prompt payment. To give a uh two hundred and ninety nine dollar reduction to get. To get, to get prompt payment rather than go through this whole exercise of, of.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Just as long as if it gets down to some little amount like that. Cities' cost isn't even, you know, comes way less than that. So leave you a little bit of room to work with.
Mr. Mayor, like to just weigh in. I think, you know. Fifteen hundred dollars. Well, first of all, I, I don't think it, it council member, or Mayor Pro Tim Raymond brought up a, a good point like. However, how we got to this number and then how often it happens. I think we were talking. I've been on council since twenty seventeen and I want to say maybe one. A year seems like we're dealing with, and these are usually significantly bigger than this. So. I'm not aware, it'd be very interesting to see. I don't think this really happens. But in, in to, to clutter up the ordinance with it, I, I think that if you're a property owner and you see that, you. I mean, if we're, if we're sending the image that fifteen hundred isn't a lot of money, well, I think property owners then are going to kind of say. Oh, they'll line, they'll wait fifteen hundred all day. You got to know um. The ordinance and you can see, and, and I think it sets a precedence. It also, I don't like and I wouldn't want the responsibility. Um, I think that this should go, come to, to council. I hear our city attorney when he says some cities give the city manager the authority to do it and then they can appeal. But I, I think the way we do it, we're not dealing with this a lot on the, on the size. Um, that fifteen hundred dollars is. That's fifteen hundred dollars in taxpayer money, you know, that they could, if you waive it, you know, that's. If you, if you collect that, then you could lower taxes by fifteen hundred, you know, or you could add it up and it, and it makes, I think if we take these numbers seriously, that. That if I'm facing a fine of fifteen hundred dollars, I'm not excited about that. And so I think that it will create the urgency for people to want to fix their problems. Otherwise, um. I don't, I don't think that that's a position we would want our city manager to be in. Um, I've always tried to stay consistent on this. I, I wouldn't want that power. I think that, like, I don't want that power by myself. That's why I, I would. It's amongst a board. It's five of us. And if we're going to give that to, to one person, I don't like those types of ordinances. Because I think it, it changes that the politics of it actually creates more problems in my opinion. I think going before a board. And a council is the appropriate way for a lien reduction um in any amount, not, not saying these are small and frankly. Again, I don't think we're going to even really deal with this, but just a couple of concerns on who should be doing it. Um, not one person, I think, at least a quorum should be making these decisions. Uh, and treating fifteen hundred the same as hundred fifty thousand. It's, if there's, and a good point you made, Mayor, is. If it's a hundred dollars a day, right, that's fifteen, not even a month, that's fifteen days worth of penalties. Well. It's almost like we're saying, hey, if you know the city manager, he'll be nice to you. Uh, you get your first fifteen days free. You know, it's.
Twenty percent of fifteen hundred.
So it, okay, so it would be.
Not the whole fifteen hundred. It's only, it, it basically gives.
The three hundred dollars.
Author, yeah, authorizes the manager to give a twenty percent reduction for, for prompt payment. That's all. And then it would, the maximum it would ever be was two hundred and ninety nine dollars. It, it doesn't authorize the manager to waive the full fifteen hundred. Just to give it a small discount to encourage prompt payment rather than go through the process.
It would come here, yeah, we'd be spending that fifteen hundred dollars deciding whether to let it loose or not. Either just let Todd make that.
Again, again, just a lot of communities are trying to, maybe.
Thirteen hundred or whatever it is out of it.
Got it. And then we have the.
You don't have all the time wasted on it.
And what it. And what, how is prompt payment defined?
Pay rather than go through the process.
But there's discretion there, right? That's a negotiating point if we don't define it.
Up to twenty percent.
But Todd could say one day, hey, get me paid in three days. I would knock twenty percent off and you could tell another person, get me paid in thirty days. Right? I, this, these types of policies, anytime you give discretion to one person, like I said, I wouldn't want that for me. I know it's small. I think it's going to create more problems. And thank you for clarifying the twenty percent, but still. It's, I would be fine with setting a. A waiving of twenty percent. You know, to put it in the policy that the council shall consider. Or giving administrative power that if they pay it. Within five or ten days after their first thirty days. You know, just have some sort of automatic legislation or, you know, ordinance in there that, that triggers, but I just don't like the idea that. It flows through, so.
Yeah, I mean, we could add some language that says. You know, it, it. It within, you know, six months of recording the lien, something like that. So to encourage prompt payment. Within six months of recording the lien, the manager would be authorized to, to grant a twenty percent reduction. On, on a lien less than fifteen hundred.
I think that the city manager would be required to honor twenty percent reduction, not. I'm trying to take the discretion out of it. I think either we're for it or we're against it.
That's actually, you know, it seems pretty straightforward that. You know, if, if, if someone. Is, you know, receives a code enforcement lien and it's recorded. You know, the, you know, the manager could be authorized to grant a twenty percent, the twenty percent reduction if. Payment is made within, you know, a certain period of time after the lien is recorded. As an incentive to. Pay it. Now, the condition to, condition of course is. They would have to be in compliance. So, so not only would it encourage prompt payment, but it would ma, it may encourage prompt compliance after the lien is recorded. One way to think of it, if you.
Yeah. It might be complicating it too much. We don't deal with this a lot. I think I'm going to go back to that and that's, I'll finish there. We, one or two, since I've been on with you, we've dealt with, it's not a big problem.
So it was big, but I've never dealt with a fifteen hundred.
Eight hundred now. How are you dealing with the fifteen hu, hundred dollar liens now?
That is more of a, a day-to-day function where it doesn't even rise to the level of notifying council. That somebody paid off a, a code enforcement judgment or, or something of, of a small. Matter like that and they're paying it in full.
And do you give a discount?
No.
Then why are we even considering a discount?
For prompt payment.
Isn't that what good citizens are supposed to do? Be in compliance?
Sure is.
We don't have all good citizens, maybe, I don't know. Been around, you know, we, I don't know, I don't know how many.
Dollar a day is enough to encourage prompt payment. I mean, the, the mechanism I think is there.
If, if it's problematic, we can take it out.
We can take it out. I mean, it's.
I think that would be good.
We were opening up this section to, to recommend, you know, to recommend the special magistrate be added into the process to make recommendations. And we, we began discussing, are there any other, you know. Changes that we might want to, you know, put in front of the councils for you to chew on and. Came up with the de minimis exception. So if you don't like the de minimis, de minimis exception, it's very easy just to take it out. And we'll just, you know, the other recommendation of course is them to authorize a special magistrate to make recommendations to you all before. You handle an application.
And we've never, we've just come into these, some of the toughest, the toughest issue has been the, these, some of them. We're now going to have a lawyer essentially, right, who is our appointed special magistrate. Who is, we, we, we will have a recommendation for the first time, opposed to just. And the benefit of hearing their case prior.
Are there any? The code board.
Used to be the code board.
Code board used to do it. And, yeah, now the special magistrate's been in place for a couple of years now, so. Lot of, I think maybe some of the requests that come in will be cases that special magistrate actually heard. So they'd be able to give you, you know, a more detailed recommendation on, on, on a lien reduction request.
They don't charge us fifteen hundred dollars for that paperwork.
Part of the hearing, I mean.
Well, he will charge for the hearing.
You're going to charge yourself.
The hearing.
So it does increase costs for the lien.
It would go on the docket for the special magistrate. Now again, you know, the city hasn't had many of them. I don't know how many the city has had.
One a year, maybe two a year.
Couple of year, couple of year, right now, perhaps. If you recall, we had one. A year and a half ago, that took a, a lot of time to try to. Sort out the facts before the council was ready to make a final decision.
Could we, okay, so they have a lien, they owe the city money. Could we have it to where they pay a fine or a fee to the, to have that hearing? Is that?
There's a one hundred dollar application fee.
Could we take? For lien reduction hearings, increase the application fee that puts it neutral, like. Because if you, if it's, I think, what's the magistrate? It's like seven hundred fifty or it's a few. Thousand dollars a meeting or something like that, I can't remember, eight hundred.
Depends on the length of the meeting.
It was averaged dollars per hour. Just say the meeting's five hundred dollars based on the length or whatnot, that it would. If that person owes thirty thousand dollars in liens, right, it might be worth the five hundred dollars to come. But I don't know, that might complicate it as well. So I'm fine with the magistrate giving us a recommendation. I think it helps us make a better informed decision. I have some reluctance. Cause I typically don't like lien reductions just in general, but I, I get it, so. It's not necessarily a good reason to go against it.
But we would take out the de minimis provisions and stick with the special magistrate recommendation.
You'll agree with that?
It's an easy fix.
Seems to be the. Seems to be the call of the council.
So a motion would be appropriate?
Mister Morrison, you want to make that motion? You. Hold the item and you.
I'm sorry, public hearing too.
I'm sorry. Got that. Uh, don't have a card on that one. Anybody want to talk? Publicly on that? We're discussing as far as the magistrate being the ruler of liens and. We had an item here to read. Put some of that power into the city council, our city manager's hands to, up to a certain number, of course, but. Nobody wants to speak, we'll just bring it back to the dais and go ahead and make the motion.
Yes, Mister Mayor, so we need to. Just say strike through. That area, is that right, Anthony?
The de minimis provision.
Okay.
I got the de minimis section.
De minimis. I've never said that word in my life.
We'll never use it again.
Strike through. Lines, starting with in addition twenty-two through. Twenty-eight. And. In line thirty or de minimisly reduced. And pass the, the remaining ordinance as written is what we want to do. So I move that we adopt ordinance number thirty-two. Twenty twenty-one, striking through the lien satisfaction language that we discussed and keeping everything else as written.
I'll second.
Hey, we have a motion and a second. To read word that motion. I won't have Mister Morrison remote. Do you want to read the motion out again, madam? Did you get it all?
I can resp, I can re. Approve the ordinance as written, striking the de minimis provision referenced.
Basically.
Yes, agreed. I just didn't want to say de minimis again.
Hard to pronounce, isn't it? De minimis. Okay, we'll call the roll, please. Move a motion.
Mayor Hoag?
Four.
Councilmember Kellum?
Four.
Councilmember Morrison?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond?
Four.
Okay, we're going to move to item number nine.
Mayor.
I'm sorry.
Prior to the meeting, we discussed taking a break at eight o'clock, perhaps a ten-minute break.
Okay.
Then we're just past eight o'clock.
I didn't, I was looking at the clock and then we got hung up on this one. Okay, we're going to take a quick ten-minute break, maybe. A little less if we get by. Okay, we're gonna take a quick ten minute break, maybe a little less if we get by.
Dave here?
He was.
It's Dave. John, can you find Dave Dickey? Just in time, Dave, we'd like you to present this item. This is the considered application for a reduction of a twenty-six thousand eight hundred eighty-three dollar code enforcement lien. Case number sixteen dash one oh one, Home Dingo LLC is the applicant. There's, there's a lot more to the story, Dave, you wanna walk us through it?
Need some overview on this, we.
Thank you, city manager and, and Mr. Mayor and council. Um, as you can tell from the, um, um, screenshot that we have here in front of you, there is a, a history to this request, and I'd like to quickly go through some of the timeline, I can say, I think that's really critical. Uh, then we'll go through some of the criteria that the council, uh, just needs to kinda keep in mind as you're considering this request. Um, and I'm not gonna hit everything, just some of the highlights, the first, the first bullet I think is critical, in February of sixteen, so let's just say a little about, about five and a half years ago. Um, the subject property suffered structural and cosmetic fire damage. The property owner at the time secured the premise, and from then on, over the next few years, uh, we've had some challenges with respect to code enforcement on keeping the property maintained and secured, I know, uh, uh, the commander, if, uh, he, he would like to, it could certainly re, uh, um, address the council on the number of times that his, uh, deputies had to go over and, and address, uh, folks squatting in the property illegally, um, so it's, it's, it's been a, it's been a, a constant thorn in, in the city's side. I think the, uh, as we move down, down into the bullets, um, I'd like to, to, uh, mention just on May fourth, twenty twenty, the property was purchased for ninety-nine thousand doll, ninety-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars by Home Dingo. Um, and, uh, it had gone through hand several time, uh, since twenty sixteen. Um, but in J- November of twenty twenty, Home Dingo applied for a permit to cause the needed repairs and improvements to the property. So from May to November, uh, that's roughly six months, uh, after they acquired the property, they came in and applied for the permits to make the needed changes.
Dave, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
That it went through many changes with people or?
As far as ownership, uh, there was, I believe, two, two owners in there, um, between the, uh, between sixteen and twenty twenty.
And the lien started in March of twenty eighteen.
Correct, that's right. Um, in June of twenty twenty-one, so approximately a month ago, city code enforcement staff did, conduct a site visit and confirmed that the property was in compliance, um, with code requirements. The liens stopped accruing and the total fine was calculated at twenty-six thousand eight hundred and eighty-three dollars. And all of this is documented in the, in the various, um, attachments to the agenda cover. I won't go into that, I don't want bore, bore everybody with that. On June ninth of twenty twenty-one, the applicant, which is Home Dingo, and I must mention, I'm, I wanna make it clear that Home Dingo no longer owns the property, they did sell it to, I believe it's one sixteen land trust, so one sixteen land trust is the current owner. However, Home Dingo is acting as their representative, as their agent, um, for purposes of this, uh, lien reduction request.
Dave, can I interrupt right there?
Yeah.
With a question, from January nineteenth of twenty twenty-one to June seventh of twenty twenty-one, um, and on, at the beginning of that, January nineteenth, Home D- Home Dingo, who applied for a permit, sold the property.
Yes.
Then a number, a number of months, say six months, just under six months went by, and they weren't compliant, who actually fixed up the property?
Home Dingo, would you like to respond to that question?
After you sold it, you fixed it?
It actually is, is just put into a land trust.
Can you state your name for the record, please?
Yeah, Michael Mummert, uh, the home, owner, owner of Home Dingo. I actually, uh, still own it, I just put it in a land trust. I'm the owner, and then we did all the work.
Okay, so one sixteen land trust is a holding of Home Dingo.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, and now I'd like to quickly move into the, uh, application of the criteria. Again, I, 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 I will not go into these at length, but the city code establishes fifteen different criteria that need to be considered as a lien reduction request is, is being considered, and again, I'll, I'll just read some of these very quickly. Um, the amount of any administrative and out-of-pocket costs, and again, that was twenty-two hundred and seventy-eight dollars for this particular case. The gravity and number of the violations, the amount of the requested reduction, time in which it took the property to come into compliance. Number seven, whether the applicant acquired the subject property with the knowledge of the subject lien, which was, is the, indeed the case in, in this situation. Uh, we've already talked about the accrued code enforcement fines, which was twenty-six thousand eight hundred and eighty-three dollars. Um, number ten, any pre- previous or subsequent violations, and there have been none. Number twelve, the relevant information contained in any title policy, and the title policy is attached to this document, and, uh, the title policy does, uh, recognize the existing mortgage on the property of approximately a hundred thousand dollars as well as the, uh, accrued fi- city code enforcement fines. Those are both exceptions to unscheduled B of the title policy. Um, any financial hardship, any other mitigating circumstances, et cetera. Um, finally, I'd just like to conclude this by saying, because the property was brought into compliance within thirteen months of purchase, this is considered a good faith effort, and staff is recommending to reduce the lien to staff costs so that other potential vestors, investors will continue to see the benefit of working in good faith with the code enforcement process. Mr. Mayor, that's pretty much concludes a general overview of the request. Obviously, Mr., uh, Mummert is here, if, 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 if the council has any specific questions, but thank you.
I have a question. Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Uh, thank you for coming, Mr. Mummert, and my question is this, I was looking carefully at your application for satisfaction or reduction of code enforcement lien, and you have here, uh, violation was inherited by the new owner purchaser, that's you, and you were told by the wholesaler that they'd be taken care of before closing, who was the wholesaler?
Uh, somebody out of Miami, I believe.
Oh, okay, so what I don't understand is why don't you go back to the wholesaler? Since if, if you have that in writing, that he would take care of these liens, and then why don't you go back to the wholesaler rather than to us?
Those were conversations, that wasn't in, in writing that they were gonna take care of it, I was told they were gonna take care of it and not worry about it. So I took them at their word, so I didn't really read the title, um, policy to see that those exceptions were, they were still in there. Actually, I didn't really notice that those were even existed till a few months ago.
Okay, and then my other question is, you bought this property under your incorporation, your LLC, Home Dingo LLC, and now you transferred it to a one sixteen land trust, it's still you.
Yes, it's still me, yes.
It's still you.
Uh, I just.
So this is like a legal?
Yeah, it's an.
A legal procedure type deal, how do you intend to use the property, are you going to live there?
Uh, I was going to live there when I bought it fourteen months ago, but, um, uh, now I've, I've just sold it. We've had.
You resold it.
Things come up and I just, just sold it.
So, not, not to one sixteen land trust, but to another party?
To another party, yeah.
To another party, okay, and when you sold it to the other party, were they aware that there was a twenty-six thousand eight hundred and eighty-three dollar lien on that property?
Yeah, they're aware of it, and I told them that I was gonna come here and, and negotiate it, but I was gonna be responsible for whatever comes out of it. And that, that's in writing.
That's, thank you, that was good, that was good, okay, and how are they going to use the property, do you know, are they living in it?
Uh, I think they're renting it, or somebody could be in one of the units, I'm not sure, I think the guy owns, has some other units here.
Thank you, just curiosity, my neighbors, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. The, when you applied for the permit on November ninth, twenty twenty, it says here, uh, Home Dingo applied for a permit to cause the needed repairs, that's the first permit I think you, you applied for, right, I'm just turning.
Yes.
Do you know roughly how long before you actually issued the permit, if you applied on November ninth, how long it took? Just wondering when you were able to start work.
I don't, uh, I don't remember that, but I actually had my, my general contractor do that, but then as soon as we acquired it, we went, came right over here and introduced ourselves to the building, um, superintendent and the code enforcement guys, and everybody's been really great with us the whole time we've been working on it, but COVID kinda slowed down a bit. So we, we started right away with, uh, demoing and things and, and asked their permission to do that while the uh, permits were being, were being done, and they okayed it, and, and so we did that, and then after, I'd say a couple of months or so, then things kinda doubt, doubt off a little bit, uh, where I didn't have crews or people that go in there, the GC couldn't go there and do things. Um, but it's been pretty much on and off for the last thirteen months, and it's just got finished up probably a month ago.
Got it, cuz I mean, it was COVID and it wasn't so much how long it took, I mean, things took us longer too, obviously. And so I was just wondering, from your intentions to improve the property, which was applying for a permit, and, you know, were you not right or wrong, were you held up, were you waiting on a permit, uh, that, that's, you could have shaved off two months, three months of time?
Uh, not that I, no, they, they were pretty good at, with everything they did, I was, I was impressed with, uh, with the city.
It's awesome.
Yeah.
Job, Dave. Cuz it, I mean, it wouldn't be ill or, or wrong, the reasons, it's just, for me, I think it's ma- held merit on, from when your intentions to, to the, just if it was a couple of months, yeah, we've got thirteen months, but, you know, might have been only ten or eleven, so you sold the property, so you're actually not the property owner, is the?
Not anymore.
Okay.
Four hundred and fifty thousand dollars is what he sold it for.
Yeah, and that's, is that for both units or just the?
That's for both, both units.
So one, so you sold both one sixteen and one seventeen? Okay, yeah, I looked at them on Zillow, they're, they're beautiful, uh, you did a really good job on the property on the inside, and, um, congrats on your sale. Yeah, to, to me, i- it's a tough one because in our city attorney, like when you're buying a property, that's why the title policy is important, is that there's times when we see transactions happen that, that the lien is factored in, I think this is where Mayor Per Tim Raymond was going, and, or at least I took it, was, you know, those are usually factored in in the sale, and what we don't wanna be in a situation, I don't know if you're here earlier, but, you know, the city, I tried for a one percent tax decrease, and it's a tight budget according to our finance director, and so when we turn around and we give twenty-six, thirty thousand dollar lien reductions, well, there's thirty thousand dollars of the, that, that we, we, we missed out on, that could have justified it as an example, and so it's really hard for me to get on board with this, um, uh, I'm open to do something, if, but I, I'm still trying to process what happened and make sure I think the mayor brought up what our costs were, those hard costs, I lost where that was on the page, but what was our hard cost? Was it, the twenty-six eight eighty-three is the total, right?
It's attachment five, it is at the bottom, and the total cost, that cost for two thousand two hundred and seventy-eight dollars and twenty-six cents.
Okay.
Yeah, it's al- it's also in paragraph one on page two, or.
Okay, thank you, I knew I'd seen it, I lost it, thank you, um, that's all the questions I have for right now, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Uh, yeah, I just have a few questions, um, is, when we, when we do the hard costs for the city, is the, uh, I know it wasn't their fault, they didn't live there then, but the sheriff's time to go there, is that figured into our city costs?
No, um, council member Kellum, if you go to attachment three of the agenda, um, Max, I'm sorry, that is the accrued fines, let me see here. Here we go, attachment five, I'm sorry. That is a detailed breakdown of the, of the city's hard costs. And I don't believe that the Brevard County Sheriff's Office costs are included in any of these.
Um, the other question is, and maybe Anthony can, how does a property that has a lien on it get sold twice without the lien being satisfied?
Um.
I can maybe answer that.
Yeah, I can tell, well, we've had this discussion. Hold on one second, cuz the question was directed to me, sir, so you're out of order, um, so give me, just let her answer, let me answer it. They can take, they can take the property subject to the lien. In fact, the title policy, I think it was with Home Dingo, shows the code enforcement liability as an exception to the policy, so it's not insured, that's number one, number two, the policy though, I don't believe that was the policy, uh, for the new, for the new buyers, is it now?
No.
That was your, your original, so the property sold in, um, what, June of this year, June thirtieth?
Yes.
The current property owner is Steveli?
I think so.
Yeah, and Burke, okay. We don't have their title policy, but I'm assuming, did you, did you put twenty-six thousand or whatever the code enforcement lien in escrow to, to resolve it?
I did.
That's what I thought, okay, so the answer to the question is, they closed with the new, the new, new buyer, which on six thirty was Steveli and Burke, they're the, they're the co-owners, and, um, you know, they have, probably have a clean title policy, would be my supposition, and they're holding an escrow, the, uh, the lien amount that's owed the city, correct?
Correct.
And the other question was, when somebody applies for a lien reduction, and then they sell the property, does that hundred dollar fee follow the property, or does the new owners have to reapply? I mean, he doesn't own the property anymore.
Um, as of six thirty, I guess he doesn't, no. So I don't, I don't know if Steveli is here, but I don't see them as an applicant, a co-applicant.
It's the first I've heard of this this evening.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question about the, didn't we run into this problem before about the owner being here? Yeah, I think Councilmember Kellum's point, if, and I think David, is that we were here before, and, and it was to, not to your knowledge, uh, it, it was one of those situations where, cuz these properties transact faster than we can keep up, and I mean, that's okay, but I think it's important to know that the application is not from the owner. Doesn't that bring a problem?
It was at the time he filed it.
Okay.
Correct, but, but like you said, the, our process is not keeping up with the speed of the transactions that are going, and they sold the property at the end of June, so now we have another property owner, um, who's not participating in this, this request. We've been down that road before, so.
John Ridgewood is the last time I think.
Right? That, that the property owners came back.
The following month.
But they had a vested interest. This situation might be different. So, yeah. Interesting. What do you think? Are we in a? What do you advise?
Up to you guys, not up to the attorney.
Like, is there a legal issue because the application was correct from the time?
But it's not correct.
I don't know. Exactly.
It's not really valid now because it's not the owner.
We're not hearing evidence from the owner. We're not getting testament, testimony from the owner. The full amount, we just have some testimony tonight. Apparently the full amount owed at twenty-six thousand, eight hundred and eighty-three dollars is, likely in the escrow account of the title company that issued the Stevelis, the title opinion.
Correct.
So the, the Stevelis are gonna get, a clean title policy, one way or another. So the city's either gonna get paid, directly by the title company in order to get the release to provide the Stevelis clear title. Or you're gonna negotiate a reduction based on this gentleman's request. At which point, the title company would issue a smaller check to the city, the reduc- the reduced amount, in exchange for the release. So the money apparently, based on what you told me, sir, is, is sitting in an escrow account with the title company. It's just a question of whether the council is inclined to give a reduction. Right? And if the council doesn't grant the reduction, my guess is the title company will promptly send you a check for twenty-six thousand, eight hundred and eighty-three dollars, because they have a title policy that they're issuing, issuing to the Stevelis, uh, showing clean title. Pretty much sums it up, doesn't it?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Good for your honesty.
We applaud you for, you know, taking the property and fixing it up. That's great. And you did make a great profit on it. And I feel that the city is due their twenty-six thousand, eight hundred and eighty-three dollars. And I don't see any reason why we should reduce it at this point. I think the, the major problem was that the wholesaler told you that he'd take care of that lien, when you bought the property. So I think your issue should be with the wholesaler. You're an honest man. But that doesn't seem quite fair. So I, I'm not in favor of reducing it. My opinion.
I think it's a shame that you, possibly gonna lose some money because there wasn't, uh, a written agreement. But I think that, it's, it's a tough decision. We're looking at twenty-six, eight, eight, three. That, I'd be willing to take off a few thousand, but, um, that's it. I just think that's, that's gonna be on you to go ahead and, and take away some of your profit on this. I just, that's how I feel.
Any more comment? I'm not in favor of reducing liens. I think the city suffers over these things. I, uh, I hate to see them come to us. I hate to see them be imposed. And I hate to see the properties sit, in non-compliance. And the only action the city can do is, go through the motions and then hope for the best at the end. But, and it's not hoping that they get the liens. It's hoping for compliance. It's all it takes is compliance, but people just don't seem to wanna, take the time to, to comply. So, it, it does eat up a lot of time. And I always question whether, the city's cost is really relevant. And is it really true? Because I, I go to some of these meetings and I know they drag on for hours and hours. And we, we wind up with a twenty-two hundred dollar cost on this one. But like, we say the sheriff's office has been over there numerous times. That's not in this report. That's a lot of time that they take out of the time of doing what they're supposed to be doing. Other than running, running over to answer some complaint about some vagrants that are living in there or whatever the problems were, but, I, I look at these things very strong. And I, I know the city staff is always just wanting to do. But I look at what city staff's gone through to get to the point of where we're talking about tonight. And, I'm not in favor of reduce, reduce the millions. I don't.
Are you ready for a motion, Mayor?
I'm gonna let the other two council members finish out too, and then we'll go for motion. If they don't have anything, you go for a motion. No, I feel like everybody.
I, I would just, uh, I would be, um, in favor of maybe reducing the amount for, from March, um, twenty twenty to December. Because there was COVID there, which made him, his prod- you know, process on getting into compliance probably took longer, would you say, sir? With, uh,
Months.
Right. I would be in favor of doing that.
Numbers together, make a motion and, bring it to the, bring it to the floor.
Well, the, the monthly accrued fine was roughly seven hundred and fifty a month.
Right.
So however many months the, council,
Seventy-five hundred dollars.
Right. I mean, to,
Minus.
That's something that you couldn't be helped, you know, delays in construction and things like that. So I would be in favor of.
Before we go to, to the motion, I'm gonna go to the public. I don't have cards, but I will go to the public. Anybody wanna speak on this? If not, I'll bring it back to the dice. And we'll go for a motion.
So, um, I just wanna verify this. The figures, if you were reducing by seventy-five hundred because of COVID, we, I come up with nineteen thousand, three hundred and eighty-three dollars. Is that accurate? Okay, so I will move that we reduce the fee of twenty-six thousand, eight hundred and eighty-three, by seventy-five hundred because of COVID. And we would require the, um, Mr. Mumurt or Home Dingo to pay nineteen thousand, three hundred and eighty-three dollars in liens.
I'll second.
No, I'm just saying, I agree.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to reduce the lien to nineteen thousand, three hundred and eighty-three dollars. We have a motion by Mrs. Raymond and a second by Mr. Morrison. To reduce the lien. You call the roll.
Councilmember Brown?
Four.
Mayor Hoag?
Four.
Councilmember Kellam?
Four.
Councilmember Morrison?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond?
Four.
Please, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
And for the record, um, the code requires that that payment be made within thirty days of the full lien gets reinstated. So, um,
I guess they'll just be waiting on your paperwork, uh, to title company.
Have they reached out to you? Has the title company reached out to you? Yeah, can you provide staff the name of the title company that's holding the money in escrow? So we can give them, stop a letter for payment?
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move on to the next item, which is item number eleven, and that is rescind direction to staff for, drafting an ordinance on alcohol sales. Mickey, you put this on the agenda. Would you wanna take the lead on it?
Yes, sir. I would like to make a motion that we rescind council direction to staff to dra- draft an ordinance changing alcohol sale hours in our city, as discussed at the June fifteenth, twenty twenty-one regular council meeting.
I'll second it. Oh, okay.
We're gonna have some discussion here. We gotta have discussion. So we have a motion on the floor. A Mrs. Kellam and a second by, Mayor Pro Tim Raymond and Mr. Brown, but we'll just let it go with Mrs. Raymond. Okay, we're open for discussion. So council, uh, whoever wants to lead off. Mickey, would you wanna lead? Being this your item?
Sure.
Go ahead.
Um, you know, I thought about, a lot about this. I think that, um, it's not a good fit for our city. Um, it kept me up at night after the vote last time. Um, I think, you know, for many reasons, and I just have a few written down here. Um, the demographics of our city is mostly retired people. Council members for a long time, Rocky Randalls and Mr. Hoag have, have worked hard to change the, the image of our city. And through ordinances over a long time have limited the number of bars in our city, um, to keep it a family oriented bedside, beachside community. Our vision statement says that we are a welcoming residential city. And we're business friendly, that is livable, attractive and safe. This I feel is, this is not right. And the staff time, could be spent on other really important issues and ordinances that move us forward. I base this on talking with residents and businesses in our city that don't want this. Residents like the small town quietness of our town. And there are many unintended consequences if it was only, uh, one bar, if we could just let him be open, but it involves takeout, alcohol sales at other places. I think you can see, I've done some research. The, the research that I attached was like a summary of a lot of research that's out there on extended and how dangerous it is and how costly it is to extend hours of drinking. Um, we talk about A one A safety is our one, number one priority. How is letting people drink till four o'clock in the morning helping A one A safety? Um, I just, I feel like it, it's not a good fit for our city. I feel for their business. I understand it's hard to run a business. This, this council has done a lot in the last year to help businesses through COVID with extended, um, we let them, uh, we're, we're, oh, we had, we kept the beach open. We let people come parking. We allowed flag. Feather flags. We've allowed outside seating. I think we're very business friendly, but this is not a fit for our, our city. And for a business to come, ask us to change the soul of our city that we've worked so hard for, to maintain a family oriented, quiet little beach town is a lot to ask. Um, we were, you know, we, we've become the shining gem of our, of the area. We have the river, the ocean and amazing parks. Um, a resident that I talked to about this, um, just, it, it really caught me by surprise of what he said. He bought a house here recently and he said, if someone had told me twenty-five years ago that I was gonna own a home in Cape Canaveral, I would tell them they were crazy. But I love Cape Canaveral. I love the quietness. I love how it is. And I would like to keep it. I just think it's unsafe. And I just can't support an ordinance that would, um, to pre- present this. Um, I understand, you know, sometimes businesses need to reinvent themselves. Your business is an awesome little local pub. You could open at seven. You could, you know, I mean, there's other ideas to your, to increase your revenue, rather than put dangerous people and dangerous things on the street. And, I also, um, talked to the residents behind Grams. I went down to Grams at three o'clock in the morning and dragged my husband out of bed and said, let's go see what's happening. And I just, I, it's not a fit for our city. And I, I just, it's just not something that I can support. That's why I've asked to rescind the direction of the staff. Because there are so many other things that we could be directing staff to do to help the future of our city. Like I said, you know, we've become a shining star. People retire here. They live here because it's quiet. They ra- you know, we wanna, we want to, um, encourage families to move here. And we want, you know, our, a resident to place to be quiet and, you know, the statistics you can see in the weekly update, you know, the last few, there's been five DUIs in a week. Um, you know, I did some research twenties, in nineteen ninety-seven, this is pretty far back, but, twelve point six percent of ac- accidents in the city involved alcohol. Um, you know, on, in two thou- nineteen ninety-nine, two thousand, there was a hundred and seventy-two citation citations for alcohol related, uh, problems. And I think, um, Commander Walters spoke of it last time we were here. Uh, I just can't support it. And, um, you know, if we could do anything else to help your business, I would bend over backwards. I just don't see this being a good fit for our city. And that's all I have.
Yes, so, but this caught me off guard because we, we're not voting for, we weren't voting for an ordinance. We weren't voting to extend alcohol sales. We were, we voted to, get all of the data and information as a council, to do that. And I remember saying, hey, can we do it in July? And I, our city manager, said, actually, I would appreciate to have enough time till August. And so when we, left that meeting, I think all of our minds, we knew that we had until August. And, I wasn't spending my time researching, the impacts. It sounds like you were, Councilmember Kellam. You went out and immediately started researching. And I think that, there's been times when I've bu- brought research to the council and they, and I was told, no, we, we need to let staff. And I actually don't disagree with the council when they say that. I'm like, I'm just one data point. But staff, I think, is going to do a good job for us and, and get all the data that we need. Because what the commander said last time, you can correct me if I'm wrong, is it's too early to tell. He said, we don't have enough data. That's what the minutes reflected that we just approved tonight. He expressed some concern, but at the same time, the big takeaway is, but it's too early. And I can see how the mindset of, you know, when you go out and you talk to residents would be, concerned when you only look at it one way. But, what happened to these businesses by keeping the beaches open, parking open, those points that you said? Missing a really big point there is that the state of Florida came down and shut bars down. Like, they could care less if our beaches were open or, or they could fly a feather flag. What good is a feather flag when they do that? The other thing I wanna point out, and I need to catch myself when I say this, is, this isn't just a bar. So if I went to a resident and I said, hey, these bars, they wanna stay up in, no, these are restaurants, that have full service menus as well, you know, just pure bars. We only got a few of those in the city. But, they're offering a service. My wife flew in from Phoenix, Arizona, um, last week. She got in at three o'clock in the morning. And there's no place, maybe McDonald's, if that, in Cape Canaveral, where you can swing in and get a bite to eat. And so to me, it's looking at the bigger picture. They are trying to, offer more services by an expanded menu. And I didn't have enough time to go out and talk to the people that you did, cause we set a precedent that staff was gonna do some research. Um, I wouldn't even expect staff to have anything done because we got a budget, after that meeting or pretty close, that we were all studying. We got a pretty healthy agenda, everything on here that we were preparing for. And I, I'm not that far ahead. And I don't think anyone really knew. And so, we got a one week's notice that this was gonna be rescinded, which is well within your right. But I feel that we're making a decision, based, without getting all of the data and letting the council have a fair chance to get all the data. I don't, some of the other arguments was that the school kids in buses, we're talking about four AM. I don't know, why four AM, a restaurant that's serving food and having drinks at four, is gonna be conflicting with children and buses. And frankly, I mean, that's so far apart from when people catch the bus. But we're saying, open at seven AM, that actually is the time that people get on the buses. But we're saying open at seven AM, that actually is the time that people get on the buses.
They're getting there at seven AM. They're not leaving at four or five. They could stay open later. And the people that live in Satellite Beach that work at the Space Center are all driving on A one A at four, five in the morning.
So I would just want to see, I've seen the, the data and I've also can bring data that argues the other side that it actually flattens the curve out. It takes that demand away. DUIs actually lower. They're both cases. We heard at the council or the, the county commission meeting uh, where that vote, I think, went four to one. Um, and we can go to the, the Florida Today, which reported on that meeting. And it said that, uh, the sheriff was not concerned about it at the time. And so from a resource standpoint, I agree, I think with Commander Walters at the time. It is too early to tell. I feel like this is by saying no to this, we're, we're not saying yes to four AM. When I look and talk to residents, I want to say, I've had a chance to consider it. And then after I, when I consider it, I take the time to look at the data. What we're doing here is going, we're not gonna consider it and let staff even consider it. That's not the reputation I want to have as a legislative body is that we're gonna not let staff do some research. I think there is merit to two AM to four, two more hours in the day that's open and the horror stories that people are gonna be driving around drunk at these awful times. You can drink at seven AM to two AM. Those are peak times. And so if you want to have a completely safe community, then the ordinance might want to be that we start stopping alcohol at midnight. Or saying you can only serve alcohol for three or four hours a day and we're gonna have a deputy sitting outside following everyone home or you know, I, I don't think that these bar owners are out turning this into this type of down. I don't drink. I have nothing to gain alcohol. It's not part of my life. Yes, I've gotten late flights. So I don't know what it's like. I did think about doing what you were doing is going down there and seeing and experiencing it. I haven't had a chance to do that. I would love to do it. But when we talk about these, this company slide in, it's trying and any other company, it's not just about them that wants to have two more hours. I'm not saying that I'm willing to give them two more hours. I'm saying I'm willing to consider it. And that's where this ended before we could even consider it. Um, I do know that feeling, Councilmember Kellum of like, uh-oh, you know, I can't sleep. Did I just go in the wrong direction? I think you were taking on the fact that you actually voted in support of, of, to a four AM. You didn't do that. You didn't support a four AM. You just said, and you were reluctant that night. I think you said, sure, we'll consider it. And so I would think that we're all in the consideration phase and you would lose sleep. It sounds like if you were to decide, but I just want to say we made an educated decision and give, give us a chance to really look at it because if this bar restaurant, I want to call them what they are. I don't want to reframe it. They're, they're a full service restaurant who serves alcohol. And if they close because literally a per, they ca- they cater to a very small niche. They cater to the hospitality industry who works at twelve. If you work in a restaurant right now, like say Zarella's or that closes at midnight or one or two in the morning, which we allow, which it's legal to sit in a bar and drink till two in the morning here. Well, when those people get off, they're on a different times on a different shift. They want to go get their dinner for the, for the first time today. They want to go sit down and relax. They've been taking care of people all evening. They're gonna go to bed at three, four, maybe five in the morning, sleep until one or two, get in at three or four in the day. They're in a second shift. There's, we're in a circular economy and there's a second shift. I don't see this increase in total amount of people out drinking. That would be a valid argument. Uh, I, I think that it's a small group, frankly. The proof is in the pudding because this is past twenty four, seven in the county and not a whole lot of bars in the county have even taken advantage of it. And that shows that the market demands really small. Well, our one Cape Canaveral business that says that's their niche, that's their market, is they take care of that hospitality crowd is now completely after an awful year, those few twenty, thirty patrons, whatever, are going right across the street. And they're driving on the same roads, but I don't think that we have seen the data that DUIs in total have increased. And so I hope we can seriously look at the data and say, I'll consider it. Um, not vote for it, but let's just go follow a good process. I'm passionate about just following a good policymaking process and really look at the data. Which, I don't think we've had a chance to do that and let staff lead that. So, thank you.
Okay, we were given thirty days or, well, one, not quite thirty days, but we were, we've had plenty of time to go ahead and look at the issues, address the issues, find out for ourselves. This decision is not a tough one. We are gonna put the welfare of our citizens at Cape Canaveral first. We're gonna put the safety of our citizens first. One crash, one DUI incident is one too many. And I'm not saying that I'm gonna blame it on this particular, um, facility or, or establishment. But I know for a fact. And matter of fact, I started to have somebody come here until I saw the rescind order by Councilman, um, Kellum. I was gonna have a trooper come here and I was gonna see about having a deputy sheriff come here to talk about the DUI arrests that are made at between two and four o'clock and to insinuate that nothing happens between two and four or there's a decline in traffic. It only takes one fatality, one incident where somebody is maimed, somebody is killed because we didn't take the consideration and couldn't make the tough decision on putting the welfare of our citizens and the safety of our citizens first. We talked about the safety on A one A. The city limits of A one A, we have to be concerned what is going on between two and four. We talked about the safety of A one A. Take the safety and take the, it's not a tough decision. We don't need to extend the drinking hours from two to four, point blank. Thank you.
Okay. I applaud Mickey for her courage to step up and say that she wanted to rescind this. And, um, I agree with her and her reasoning. I think it's not really our job to come up with creative ideas to help slide in, uh, beef up their business, but I'm in. I would help. Jokingly, we came up with a couple of things to tell you the truth. But I don't think two hours more is going to make it or break it. I've done some homework too. I talked to Grams. I made some phone calls to Grams. And I also talked to some friends who used to go to Grams on a regular basis. And they're big, um, poker players. And they don't go there any longer because they don't like the crowd. And I thought that was kind of an interesting comment. And, um, so I think there's a point here that you do get a different crowd after two AM, different type of personality. So, um, I agree with this and I think that Mickey's on the right track. I think she was torn to begin with on this. So I don't think that there's any, going to be anybody trying to convince her now to change her mind. Thank you.
It's a weighted argument and, uh, I, I have to go along with the group. I'm gonna ask the favor of the sheriff's office. Would you give us a little bit of information that you could for the past month, let's say? Have we had a surmount a bunch of problems over this in the city? Evidently, our staff has not gathered any information because of this thing that came up on the agenda. I don't know. Have we?
We began the process, yes. We do have some.
Yeah, we've been working with them. Process as requested. But I, I could tell you the, the calls for service, and let me start out first of all saying, I know we got representatives from Slide In. I don't want to compare Slide In with Grams. It could be a totally different customer base. So what I'm referencing is what we're experiencing at Grams. So we actually had deputies on Merritt Island look at the, uh, restaurants and bars on Merritt Island. And you have about three and you got a fourth bar that's looking at opening up on a twenty four, seven schedule or extended hour schedule. Uh, but they, all three of them have got modified schedules. They're not experiencing the large crowds because they've got their hometown customers, Merritt Island customers that are coming to their establishment. But what we're experiencing at Grams is that most of those people there are transient folks. They're coming from Merritt Island, from Cocoa Beach, Cocoa, Titusville, from all over the place because it's known as the hangout right now after two AM. Now, will that happen with Slide In? I don't know. I don't know. Nobody knows right now. I mean, that would be something that management would have to control. But I can tell you is that DUIs are up uh, past two AM to seven AM. Well, we pulled the stats from April first to June twenty first. Those stats are up. Our calls for service for the establishment are up. Over the weekend, there was between three and four hundred people that were at that establishment. So now we're gonna have to move into a new direction to address that. You know, with, uh, county code enforcement, also fire rescue and fire codes. Because it's gonna become in a, a very dangerous situation for us to respond to a disturbance there and having two or three deputies go into a crowd of three hundred. That's not a safe situation. And like I said, the data is fresh. It's new. That's why the sheriff picked the position he did with the county. It's what image do you want in this city? What is the culture you want in the city? Not only with your residents, but also with your, with your business. If you guys decide, yeah, this is the direction we want to go, we enforce it. We do, we have to do within law enforcement to maintain order. But if you decide not, then we don't, we're, we're not worried about it. And then we look at bars that are illegally distributing alcohol after two AM. But it, it, right now as it stands, it's gonna be a decision and I don't think it's gonna change much. You know, Wes, I, you know, I appreciate it and looking at the data, but I don't think it's gonna change much in thirty days at the end of August. Um, and again, while you called me up here, you wanted my opinion. You're gonna have staff do a lot of research into data and I get it. And it's out of fairness and request for a business. But ultimately, it's gonna take a lot of data that's gonna go against what we've already received and started looking at with calls for service. That's gonna change the mind of the majority of this board. So in my opinion, I think you're wasting time with, with city staff. You truly are. But that's, that's just my opinion. But again, it's whatever you guys decide. We, we, we will be here to, to support you in this community and make it as safe as possible. But I can tell you, the initial stats that we pulled, calls for service are up directly related to the hours of operation and also DUIs and citations are up from the two to seven AM timeframe. Then I don't think it's gonna change a month of August.
Okay, um. Mayor, I'd like to. I'd like to go ahead and, and advise, or am I still?
Are you going into motion or?
No, I'm not going into motion. I just want to go ahead and say that based on a conversation that's had and, uh, and the council, I don't think it's necessary for staff to look into this issue anymore. It's obvious, um, direction the council's moving. We are concerned with the safety and welfare of our citizens. I think that's wasted, um, time for the staff to continue it anymore.
Mr. Mayor, can I just, so binder, I would love to see that data, um, because I, I use it's from April first to June twenty first at some point. And I don't expect it tonight, obviously. But compared to what? April to June, that time period compared to last year, past three years? Is it June is higher than April? Um, so I would like to see that. I think that this is an issue we haven't had enough time to do. And I know Councilmember Brown says we've had plenty of time. Well, staff hasn't finished according to our city manager. And so you're basically telling him, well, you've had plenty of time. And I disagree wholeheartedly. I think our staff had sixty days according to the motion. Councilmember Kellum's full within her right to rescind and say, no, now you don't got sixty. I want to move this and convince all of us otherwise. And so there's no harm, no foul, but to say that we've had plenty of time, I don't think is, is, is right. And our staff is a testament of that because they, they were using their time wisely, but they didn't finish the data. And if the commander's correct, that having them do it is a waste of time, maybe so, but I, I haven't this to me is just a sloppy process. I don't have a problem looking at a citizen and saying, I voted against the two AM to four because I, because I took the time. We looked at the data. We waited three to four months. I looked at the same stuff the staff got a chance to do. And, and I said no to two to four for those reasons. But now I gotta look at a citizen and go no. I, we wouldn't even consider it because each council member got, gathered their own data. And I wish that you would, Councilmember Brown, bring those deputies and state troopers in. I would love to hear them. I would love to hear that. That would be very, very helpful to me. And again, I'm not over here saying I'm for two to four, but I just think it's a good process. And it's, and it is a it's not a waste of time. It's not illegal to sit in a bar and drink alcohol.
Nobody said it was.
What we're doing is we're saying, I know no one said it was, but I'm, I'm trying to point is we're saying, well, if you're allowed to do it from two to, from one to two, let's let them do it from two to four. That's something to consider. And then let's see some data on why that's a bad idea. Let's bring in testimony from the people you talked to and let's really wade through it because if one DUI is too many, okay, one business closed is too many. What if they run a business? No DUIs happen. They run a responsible business. DUIs happen all the time for businesses that are open from normal hours. Do, would you be in favor of taking the drinking to twelve midnight? If you want the safety.
That's not the issue here.
No, but, but we have the authority to change the law. If we want the safety of the city, we back it up. So my point is, is there's four to five hours that you can't drink. A business being, closing their doors is too far. I want to see what the staff was able to get. If anything, I wouldn't expect it in that short amount of time. I'd love to see what the commander saw. And I'm basically gonna go on my own now and just try to understand the issue and take the opportunity that I think Councilmember Kellum got to do. Councilmember Brown got to do and come to my own conclusion. Um, I wanted to do it with you, but that's looks like we're not gonna get there. So, thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Manager, could you give us what you have or we're?
We can certainly forward the council. We can forward to the council the extent of the research we've done, certainly.
I would like to call a question.
Your option.
I just, I just.
You need a second and a vote on that and then discussion.
The public, but
Mayor, do you have any cards on this for public comment?
Like getting ready to call. The, the card is from Mr. Komashok. Peter?
Thank you, everyone. So I, I listened, I listened to the whole conversation and you definitely summed it up. I mean, I hear both sides of the story. Once again, um, we didn't ask for past two o'clock, but it is making a direct impact to my business. My sales have been down twenty five percent from last month. And it's, it's public information, full tax records, right? Um, I do have some facts though. On, on May fifth, twenty twenty one, on an article from Florida Today titled, um, twenty four hour booze is now legal and unincorporated bivar. In that article, they quoted Sheriff Wayne Ivy as saying, I have shared with several county commissioners that I am in support of this measure and I do not believe it will have any negative impact on our community. So do you think, I have a question for you. Do you think he made that statement without doing any research or looking into facts? So you, so everyone here is making an, an opinion based on their own opinion and talking to a few people. No one is basing it on quantitative data that, um, the city manager was offering us in August. You're not even giving us a fair chance. Okay, another thing, he, uh, another comment here. Do you believe that, um, Sheriff Ivy would support twenty four hours alcohol if he thought it was an endangerment to the community? Can anyone answer that for me?
I don't think he had enough data yet.
Exactly, my point. We don't have enough data.
Exactly. My point, we don't have enough data yet. You're exactly right.
But do we need it in our city? That's, that's the thing. Do we wait till we have? Two DUIs? Do we wait till somebody gets ran over on A one A before we say, oh, this is not going to work?
So you're just speculating that it's going to happen and you have no data?
I I'm, I'm just saying, I don't think it's a fit for our city. And if we could just give that right to your bar, to you where you are, I would be maybe for it. But it, it has a lot of unattended unintended consequences. There's more to this. There's, you know, it's not just you.
So maybe there's a compromise. Okay? Um, five county commissioners voted on this and one voted negative, correct? That was your county commissioner Lober, correct? He made a statement also. Commissioner Lober did reiterate his support for limiting twenty-four hour alcohol sales on the weekends. Would you be willing to do that? I think that's a good compromise. It doesn't affect kids waiting for the bus. It doesn't affect the majority of people going to work. It's just gives me a fighting chance to keep my business open. It gives me the opportunity to cycle my employees through that are losing income during the week because they're not getting the tips. Um, Ms. Raymond here stated that a lot of people in the service industry are coming over to Cleveland Avenue to get support for their bills. Right? You might see some of my employees very soon. But these are all valid facts. I'm not even getting a fair chance here. So all I'm asking is pull the data. Let's analyze it. I would like the opportunity myself to review that data and come up with my, you know, my analysis. I don't want to get the data at the last second where I don't, I can't digest it and come up with my counter position. But I mean, would you consider just on the weekends? At least it would help me maintain a little bit. Because my weekend crowds are done too, because everyone's going to Grams. And you're getting more calls because it is so packed. People need to spread out. There's problems when they're all together in one location. I think that my people that used to come, now they're like, oh, they're hospitality. We have to run the brands because now we can stay there until four. But maybe on the weekends, at least maybe those people would would stay at my location and Grams wouldn't be this party place. Like this destination saying, hey, let's go to Grams because everyone's there. Maybe it would spread out and it wouldn't be such a problem for the sheriff's office either. But no one's even considering looking at the data. And that's all I'm asking. So I think that we're just, we're pulling the plug too soon. Um, I mean, if the, if the city resources haven't been able to compile the data, how do, how do you, as an individual, come up with this? You know, your, your opinion so fast? Because that is your opinion in your mind and that's what you believe. You're not looking at the data. Go ahead.
Can we call the question?
Reynolds. So you don't have a card, but you fill one out later.
Okay, I'm Rocky Randallson. I live at three oh eight East Central here in Cape Canaveral. And I think Wes, Councilman Morrison and the gentleman prior to me. Are feeding a dog that won't hunt. Now that's kind of blunt, but you're talking about Bervard County. On one side of you, Wes, is a lady who's probably lived here most of her life. On the other side, it's a man who was born here and lived here. I've been here forty years. Uh, you've been here maybe three or four. And that's, that's. Just a little bit of experience that I'm trying to say. That the community, we don't really care a lot what happens in Cocoa Beach. Or in the county as such. We're speaking for the residents of our city, the community that we, where we live. And I compliment Mayor Protem and Councilmember. About the the situation that you went and looked and took the nation, took the time and I appreciate you for that. And the items I won't be laboring, but the things I wrote down are what we, this city of Cape Canaveral. Really stands for in. None of this talk between the two, I don't think, really fits the image that we want for our city. Now, we don't care what happens in Grams and we don't care what happens in the port. But we're speaking for the residents here. I commend you for your, your work on that. And and I guess that's where I take it from. We represent the residents of the city, not somebody that comes and goes. And we've been here our lifetime almost. So I'd leave it with the idea that. Councilmember Kellum, thank you for what you've done. And I'll just step back. I don't want to prolong this. But we're approaching it at two different areas. One is what others people want and one is what our city wants. Residents, thank you.
Rocky. You want to make a comment?
Yes, yes. Thank you. Um, thank you very much. Um, I I understand the position, but we don't have all the data. And Councilman Brown stated that he was going to be bringing a deputy and something, but I would like to bring Sheriff Ivy here. Let's get his side of the story. He stated that he doesn't see an issue. I'd like to get his opinion. If you're going to bring those other people, I'd like to request that he comes here. And have the opportunity that he gets to speak and explain why he decided to pass it. Because if it's a serious issue, I would love for Bervard County to pull it back. Let's all be on an even playing field again. I'm happy with that.
Maybe in a few months they will when they.
So so let's get the opportunity to get the data and bring the sheriff back in.
It's a small, it's, we're a small town, not the county.
And we have, we have Commander Walters, who is in charge of our city and he can, he gave us his statement.
So he's not on board with the sheriff?
No.
You guys don't have those discussions internally?
We don't address the.
Yeah, I'm just, it was just a statement. Sorry about that.
Okay.
I'm, I'm just asking, this is unfair. You're not even looking at the data. Um, I understand you, you've all lived here, but times are changing. We're a vacation destination. We have the cruise ship, one of the largest cruise terminals in the world. We're putting an aquarium, my understanding, out here. Disney is coming here eventually. This is a vacation destination. So from years from now, when everybody's changed seats and there's a whole new council, there, the topics are going to be completely different. And there's going to be a complete new point of view up there because I think we need some fresh faces. Thank you.
That's enough.
All right, ma'am, I'll let you speak. You need to give us a card though before you leave, please.
Hello, Elise Kamalchuk, Peter's wife. Um, I guess all I was thinking also as we were talking about this is I actually think that it. Maybe puts a little bit more danger on the city of Cape Canaveral streets. Because the people that are in Cape Canaveral that do want to drink, they are going to travel to Grams. Whether on foot, which then makes A one A more dangerous if they get hit by a drunk driver coming home from Grams or whatnot. If that's the way that our look, our point is. Um, and I mean, if that's another argument is the kids from school, I also believe that maybe the. Seven A M. crowd, by the time they stumble in and we're like, look, we can't even serve you because you probably got cut off coming here. Do you know what I mean? So those are the people that we should be worried about hitting our kids that are getting off the bus more so. Um, and on A one A, I'm sorry, like any time of the day. I mean, I'm not trying to do twenty-four hours. We're not trying to do. That we're really not. We're just trying to get the two hours, even if it's just on the weekends. I mean. Um, like we don't have, we don't have, um, at our place, we don't have a big, um. Tourism for our, I, maybe we do need the ideas from you. The ideas would be wonderful, but we don't grasp the tourists. Um, for some reason, we are just the little locals. Um, and we've never been a big, big, you know. But it was like that we finally had something going for us. And now like our, we're so far down that it's. And and our employees like they're, hey, calling me, hey, can we please leave for the night? Do you know what I mean? Um, it's so dead and it's just, it's really like heartbreaking to hear every single night, hey, can we cut? Can we cut? Which means like, so because honestly, like fifty dollars to somebody that works for us is a lot of money. Do you know what I mean? So before where they were making what they were making now, I mean, even if. So if a person is going there and they're not going to be making their, like, their mindset is to make a hundred dollars a night. You know what I mean? It's like exciting if, if you make more than that. So now it's like, they're looking, okay, let's flip a coin on who's going to stay. Because you're not even going to make that hundred dollars. Do you know what I'm saying? Like, it's hard for you to understand that probably because like. Like you earlier with the hundred dollars wasn't seeming like a lot to you, but like that is a person's electric bill. You know what I mean? And they live here and. I mean, they're my friends too and they are our employees. And so it's hard because even the people that are, um. Like it's harder enough to keep as cooks, but so it's hard for me to explain this, but we can't even keep on the, um. Demographic of how much people are paying regular cooks. Like I don't know how much Outback is paying a cook, but so. I used to think that we were doing good by starting them at ten, eleven dollars per hour. Now we can't even like. Keep on paying the people what we should be, need to be paying them, which now we need to be starting people at twelve. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. And then it just, you know what I mean? It's just a trickle effect. And so we lose cooks, lose bartenders and it's just a very difficult thing. So. But thank you for listening.
Okay, I think we've heard all we can hear, but. Is there any consensus to bring it back later or just follow through with?
Yeah, I called the question earlier.
Question I'm saying, I'm just asking you if there's any rescinding that or, okay, so. You're calling the question and we had a second? Do we have a second?
Do you have to give a second to call the question?
Well, no, she's making a motion.
Councilmember Brown and I think number Jim Raymond seconded her motion.
Okay.
There was a motion, there's a motion on the floor, mayor. You can either call the roll. Or if there's going to be further discussion, if someone wants to call the question, you can cut off discussion with two thirds vote of the council. And then you would be required, mayor, under Rob's rules to call, call a vote. So I don't know whether or not you want to discuss this anymore.
Just asking her, don't you need a?
But there is a motion.
Just wanted to know if she was going to stay with her motion and the second.
It's on the floor.
We'll just call the question then.
Ready?
Call the motion.
Councilmember Brown?
Four.
Mayor Hoag?
Four.
Councilmember Kellum?
Four.
Councilmember Morrison?
Against.
Mayor Protem Raymond?
Four.
I don't like seeing this split, but maybe split. All right, item. Oh, item number twelve. Feather flags and snipe signs. Discuss whether staff, give staff some direction on this. Because the thirty days is running out on it.
Yes, sir, mayor. I can help with this. Last council meeting, we, as the emergency order was sunsetting by, um. Vote of the city council that left us with this question about what to do about the feather flags. Snipe signs, and that was done as an incentive to help our local businesses throughout the COVID nineteen pandemic. It was just decided by the council to put that decision off thirty days to the June or the July council meeting. So here we are. Uh, I wanted to share with the council and the public that we did do a little bit of research. Code enforcement looked out. To see where we were last Monday. This was a week ago Monday. Uh, there were at that time fifteen feather flags, um, out in the city among twelve different locations. And there were eight snipe signs out among four different locations. So that's the extent of how it was used on that date, mayor.
Okay. I noticed there's a few around here and there. There's not many. I'd say one or two businesses have two and then the rest are singles. Um, snipe signs, I see them. I would like to see some enforcement on it. Uh, if we go ahead and make this a given thing for. To pick up the sandwich board signs. This is just what I'm saying as far as if we get into this thing. And make this a reality to where they can have them. Then I notice a lot of them just sitting out on the sidewalk all night or on the property. They don't take the stuff in. And the idea of when we first did snipe signs, that was a big issue with. Uh, with the people about the snipe signs being on the sidewalks and. So then we set them onto the, the easement and back onto the property easement and. Now they're back out on the sidewalks and they're back right out where people will walk over them and. But we need some enforcement on this if we, if we put these things into a. Ordinance that yes, you can keep them and yes, you can have them. But when the business closes, they're supposed to take them in. They never do. So I would support letting them have this. But I would need some enforcement behind it.
Yep, Mr. Mayor, I agree. If that sign is not on their property and they're putting that on the, in the right away or another property, that's. I think we got a fine for that. And so that would be good. And but if it is in their property and. They're doing it because it's helping them. Like our city manager said, we did this to help them. I don't want to stop helping them. And to think that fifteen feather flags of twelve businesses. Eight snipe signs for businesses, roughly sixteen different businesses in Cape Canaveral are taking advantage of one of these. I think that. No one's got killed. No one's got hurt. This isn't a crime to have them and it's, they're rather benign. And if it helps their business, I'd like to see us. Remove any prohibition for these feather flags or snipe signs. And obviously abide by the rules that for the obvious one, it needs to stay on your property. You can't put signs up on other people's property. And that's certainly out of the right of way. So if it can be enforced, then.
Well, right now we give the businesses, here's, here's one of my points. We, when we, when we give the business the right to. Put the feather flags out for. More, more traction to their business. We gave them the right to have a flag. We got a lot of places with two flags. So what we need to do is, if we're going to go this direction, we need to. Take a look at how many flags per business. You got one business, say. Two hundred foot frontage or a hundred and fifty foot frontage. Two flags is probably appropriate. Three, four, it starts to look like. Barnum and Bailey Circus or whatever, but. You get into a multiple building with four, five, six, seven. Rentals in that one building, some of the little shopping centers that we have. I would think maybe. A flag per business. You're going to have, maybe some of them have a flag, some of them don't. This is the type of discussion we need to have to put this into play. The snipe signs or the little sandwich board signs. One per business is what the ordinance allows. That can stay, but they need to take them in at night. If they don't take them in at night. Then we need to have some sort of. Retribution back into this ordinance where you didn't take your snipe sign in for three nights or whatever. Code enforcement picks it up. You're not getting it back. You lose that right or you get fined or whatever. But there needs to be some kind of enforcement into it. We make ordinances and they don't get enforced strongly. It's a no need to have the ordinances. But I'm looking at how many snipes signs we allow one. How many feather flags? Right? The ordinance is one, but there's places with two. So if there's two, they're not obscene to me. I don't think they're obscene, but when you're getting a bunch of them together, then it starts to look bad. So you need to all think about how you want to do that. I, I already have my mindset on how I would like to do it, so. Uh, but I don't want to bring that up right now. I've already talked to Mr. Morley and how I feel about it and. I'll let you people just weigh in on it and. Put something together because that's what you're here for.
I thought we approved the feather flags on a temporary basis. That was done through the appearance board.
We did.
And then we extended it. But I think it's time to, you know, bring it back in. I don't think we need them all the time. I think people who are here got the message. But as a temporary basis, I think it's okay. Snipe signs, I agree with you, mayor. They need to be brought in. But that's it. It's. I do think that if we have ordinances, they need. I do think that if we have ordinances, they need to be enforced.
So your take is is no snipe signs, I mean, leave the snipe signs, but no feather flags.
Just enforce the laws that we have is what I'm saying. And we had a temporary basis for feather flags. And we said, okay, during the cor- coronavirus, they could have feather flags. Okay. Now we should go back to our original ordinances and have them enforced.
Hey, Mr. Gorgoneese wants to
Thank you, Mayor. Let me, let me, um, I don't think it was in the agenda item, but let me just start off where you're at. Currently under the city code, and it's been this way for quite some time, feather flags and snipe signs are prohibited. So if you're saying enforce the code, then the snipe signs and feather flags need to be removed. However, if you remember during COVID, the city council, you know, using its emergency powers afforded um, businesses an opportunity to temporarily install feather flags and snipe signs. As you know, the governor basically rescinded and superseded all emergency resolutions and so forth on the chapter two fifty two Florida statutes, which you relied on to adopt that provision. So you afforded a thirty day grace period for property owners to come into compliance. So that time period has now expired. The city has not gone and enforced the current code trying to get, re-educate business owners to come into compliance, right? So now the question for you all is, um, do you, do you want to leave the code as it currently is? Feather flags and snipe signs are prohibited? Or do you want to provide direction, some other direction to amend the code? Or not? I mean, so, you know, where do you want to go with this? Cause I'm hearing, I'm hearing you say, you know, enforce the code, enforce the code. And if the staff went out and enforced the code, right, you'd be pulling them up, right, Mr. Dickey? Your code enforcement staff would be busy pulling up the remaining half a dozen or so feather flags that are out there and all the snipe signs that are been posted on properties.
That's what I'm saying. How long would it take for staff to prepare an ordinance just for us to consider? What would be a comfortable amount of time? No, I mean, I don't think it's a rush. So.
Well, there's a lot of things on our plate right now.
Okay.
Um, and I, I would say, um, ninety days.
Minimum. So a hundred twenty gives you a little bit more exhale. Cause I'm thinking if we did, if it was ninety or one twenty, I would move, and this is an emotion, but I'm thinking if we can extend so when we're looking at our summary, staff did a very nice job by giving us our options, three options. Item number two, direct staff to prepare another extension. I would, I think that we could, should seriously consider extending this for another ninety days with the intent that staff prepares in ordinance. If we get to that ninety day point and you're not ready, well, we'll come back in the meeting. We'll extend however much we need till you are ready, but yeah, that, that I think would be the, the best. I think these flags are going out. I, I think pulling them down is the, is the wrong thing. I do think that the mayor's point is that we, the temporary resolution, the emergency order had some, some rules in there, one. And that we're seeing two. Well, I don't think they need counsel for that. That just needs to be enforced. But, uh, I think that we can tighten all that up in an ordinance and really lay out when they need to be in, they can't be in the right of way. The types of materials is something I'm concerned about, especially with hurricane winds is the structure of it. Like you want something that's not going to be a wind projectile, especially if it's along A one A. And so we can get around and and set the policy around the type, the material, the setbacks. The things that are largely done in some of the, you know, or like the temper- the election signs and a lot of that language is in there. And so I would say temporarily extend it for another ninety days with the goal to consider an or- ordinance after ninety days that permanently allows us to use the feather flags and snipe signs.
The appearance board usually takes care of these issues and it goes, it usually takes care of, right, exactly.
Planning and zoning board because it's a land development regulation, so they would have to review and make a recommendation if you wanted to amend the code permanently.
That with ninety days goes to them. And then it comes back to us and we might see it in a hundred twenty, a hundred
Yeah, and if it's the direction of council to, to pursue that, um, it would be a simple matter for you each to meet with me one on one, have that phone call with me about the how the, how it would work in the code, what your ideas are, and we'll come up with, uh, if, if this is the goal of the council to do this, we'll come up with a code that kind of plugs in and works neatly within our, our existing regulations for these two additional types.
I think it's still got along with, it's got to get through P and Z with a recommendation, I think, is it, it's, you know, and then it's I don't think P would die in P and Z. I don't think they have that authority, right?
They can recommend denial.
Recommend it. And then they just got to get through us through two readings, right? And so we're we're at least a hundred fifty, a hundred eighty days out, I think, which is six months.
There, there is a community aesthetic part of this that the, the board would also review and they were anytime they're looking at land development regulations, uh, and revisions to that, they, they are considering the impact on the community. And I would also, um, suggest the council members, as you, you know, you talk to people, you talk to people about a lot of things, find out what the community wants too. And as you meet with me or the staff, uh, let's talk about what community, the community desires here from community standards point of view. There may be some who are very opposed to it. There may be some who are just ambivalent.
We've been through this several times. We've talked about feather flags and snipe signs several times in the last five years. So.
There's people that are opposed to them. There's people that are have no problem with them.
Exactly.
But the snipe signs are, are signs that they're all over the place a lot of times, two feet.
Temporary. I'm sorry, the discussion we're having is about temporary signs. There's a setback from, of two feet from the right of way for temporary signs in general.
And also the sandwich board signs.
Yeah, the, the, for, for permitted signs.
So that, that was my point. If we're gonna make a code, we need to have it enforced and we have to lay out what we want in that code and like Todd says, talk to him, talk to the people and come up with something that works. And the only way to do that would be to extend what we have if somebody desires to do that or we desire to do that. But, uh, those people that have two out there, they need to be told they can't have but one right now.
We'll get that message out.
That's what's the problem going on. You give them two, they'll take three. You know, that's the way it goes.
We can shorten it. Like after you meet with us one on one, we might realize, and like we might resend and and say, no, we don't even want to go to P and Z board. But could we do, uh, let's just say a hun- because you want to have enough runway where it can get through the P and Z, where it could get through community appearance, whatever process and gets to us. And so I think we set a temporary date out and we're not bringing this back, always having to, right, push it out further. So I think your mind is better on hundred fifty days, hundred eighty days. What do you think would give enough runway, knowing that in next meeting, we might go after talking, this is, we don't want to do it.
Yeah, we'll see another motion to rescind come up.
Yeah.
It could happen. But so, uh, even the planning and zoning board, they might need to kick it around for two months. So I think if we just wanted to pick a, a date, I'm just maybe arbitrarily pulling this out of the air. If we said by the February council meeting, February of twenty twenty two council meeting, for example.
My, um, you know, we did this to help the businesses, which is awesome. And I think that if we extended it. But you know, right now we have, what do you have there for flags? How many?
Fifteen.
Fifteen about the
Yeah.
Fifteen now, but if we, if we let it tap in all the time, are we gonna have a hundred and fifty?
Well, that's what I'm saying. You're gonna have to in your mind put something together in an ordinance and regulate how many each business is gonna have. Like a chicken place, not to pick on somebody, but they have two. It's not obtrusive because they got a pretty good sized piece of property. But if you have six or eight along there, that gets a little bit. That's my point. When you get into a strip mall, you got store, 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 store. Are you gonna allow each store two? I would not think so. You probably want to have one if you got eight or ten stores. Because there, there are places around here that that take advantage of it. There's like I mentioned, anybody, but there's a couple businesses together and the one don't want flags, the other puts up two or three. Cause they're all spread across in front of the other businesses. So it looks like he's got a sign, he's got one, but they're all one person's.
That more than time to, to enforce, you know?
Well, that's enforcement part of it. But I say if we got an ordinance, we will enforce it. I, I'm for letting people have their things and what they want to do, but
And if you're actually finding then it starts to compensate for staff's time. I think it's a loss when you're, when staff's running around and you know, I think our staff's approach is to give a warning, give them a chance, but those repeat folks that we've got a process and a fee schedule for.
There, there's a lot of people don't like them because we had a meeting on it before and it was like
I wonder how much it really helps the business.
I, I don't know. I don't have flag, look.
I think the, the fact that they're doing it, it means it works for them. And I don't think I think they're gonna need two years, three years to recover from COVID, if they ever recover. Some may not. And so I don't think we're out of this and I don't see the big violence in having a sign out. And I do see the safety if it's out, it's can blow around and I think if it goes through community parents, goes through P and Z, the ordinance is going to be pretty tight.
Okay.
I think most people use the internet. They use Yelp when they're traveling to find out recommendations for food and restaurants and different kinds of things.
Yeah, but that's not our job.
No, I know, but they do use it. They, and I'm not sure how effective a flag is, a feather.
But that's, that's not our job is to, to say you don't do it because we don't think it's effective. Yeah, the fact that fifteen businesses are doing it tells me that they didn't go out and spend that money and do that if it wasn't working.
There are fifteen flags, feather flags, not necessarily fifteen businesses.
Actually, there's sixteen. There's twelve with feather flags, putting up fifteen twelve businesses representing fifteen flags. There's four businesses representing eight snipe signs. So four plus twelve is sixteen different parcel businesses in Cape Canaveral that are
Or taking in.
They're doing it because it's
Okay, so
Mayor, as, as I'm trying to read the consensus of the council here, the I'm hearing at least three council members speak in support of this, uh, and it would be for feather flags and snipe signs or just feather flags?
I would just prefer myself feather flags and, and sandwich boards, which we already have.
Okay.
That's already in the
So the consensus I have from at least three of the council members is direct, we're directing staff to create an ordinance which would authorize the use of feather flags with limitations, uh, and regulations that will be developed during these coming months with a delivery date to city council anticipated of the February twenty twenty two council meeting.
I gotta suggest, I gotta suggest, Todd, I mean, that's, I think you're on, on track. I gotta you just can't do this without any standards. I mean, because the code currently prohibits both of these signs. So one, one suggestion um, would be, since the council, if you authorized temporarily these signs to exist during COVID, is to use the same standards that you adopted for the temporary use of these signs. Okay, and, and I'm not sure that was, that was clear. So I, I would recommend that you authorize a resolution temporarily suspending the city code prohibition of snipe signs and feather flags.
Or just feather flags.
Or no feather flags?
Just feather flags.
Oh, just, just
We're letting snipe signs die.
Okay, snipe signs die. For feather flags, subject to the same conditions that were in the prior emergency resolution adopted by the city council and directing that the planning and zoning board consider, um, whether to permanently change the code to allow feather flags and provide a recommendation to the city council within like a hundred and twenty days. So you, you're temporarily suspending subject to the same conditions that you previously adopted during the emergence, COVID emergency. And you're directing during the suspension time period, this planning and zoning board to present a recommendation to you within a hundred and twenty days. On whether to allow feather flags permanently. That to me has some structure and some standard that your code enforcement staff and your planning department can deal with.
That's good. Thank you, Anthony.
Temporary, temporarily suspending subject to the regulations we adopted under COVID. And what was the second part?
And directing the planning and zoning board to consider whether to um, change the code to permanently allow feather flags and provide that recommendation to the city council within a hundred and twenty days.
And we're, and also it is, um, allowing the thirty day period to lapse for snipe signs, to expire for snipe signs. So starting tomorrow, snipe signs are not allowed. They're, they're prohibited again.
Yeah, and, and also, uh, we just make sure that our feather flags are taken down at night because we're in the, we're in the season where that stuff doesn't need to be out all night.
That was in, that was one of the requirements in the emergency resolution that you all passed that now property owners may not have been complying with it, but that was a condition.
They could drive around the city about one o'clock in the morning and they're all out there. The snipe signs are out there, the sandwich boards are out there. They don't take them in. And, and we're in a bad season where that stuff's out there. Okay, that's the end of our meeting. Uh, we went through our agenda.
I think we need to do that motion.
Yeah, I think we need a motion to go home.
I don't need to give any reports. I don't have a report.
Type and everything. I'm like, I want to
I want to go home.
All right, I'm gonna give it a shot.
Mayor, um, Councilmember Morrison is wanting to make a motion to that effect.
To go home?
No, to
Yeah, I will make the motion to go home right after this motion. Um, what Anthony was rattling off.
Yeah.
So so well, no, we got three things in here. This is a discussion to move to take action. So, okay. So I moved to temporarily suspend the feather flags ordinance subject to the regulations we adopted under the emergency order with COVID and direct the planning and zoning board to consider permanently allowing feather flags and provide a recommendation to council within a hundred
Hundred and twenty days.
Twenty days.
Or months. And I would put that in the form of a resolution.
Or sooner, in the form of a resolution. And with no a permanent allowance of snipe signs or consideration. So this is strictly for feather flags.
Got it.
Second motion. We have a second.
A second.
We have a second on it, but Mr. Brown, we will call the roll.
Councilmember Brown? Mayor Hoag?
Four.
Councilmember Kellam?
Four.
Councilmember Morrison?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond?
Four.
That's a well needed ordinance, believe me.
I move to adjourn.
Okay, we're, we're adjourned. Thank you, Mr. Morrison.